Wait. Give it another minute. So, oh, just turned six now. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Tony Gonzalez, Chair of the Planning Board, starting the meeting for City of Brockton, December 3rd, 2024. I'm gonna first quickly do a roll call of our board members. Oh, I didn't see you at first. James, James Sweeney?
Here.
Matthew?
Here.
Marty?
Here.
Yolando?
Here.
Tony, obviously present. Thank you. Agenda. Ring her off, or that's gonna keep interrupting us. Review of the agenda. We have a presentation from Rob May on proposed zoning change. We have an extension for Oak Hill Way. We have a return to ZBA which has requested a continuance. And we have returned to ZBA for 445 Coquelin Street, a definitive subdivision for Zero Field Street, and a definitive subdivision for Zero West Chestnut Street. First, I'd like to, Rob, are you gonna say something?
I just want to let you know that Evan and I both are ultra remote. But so, so if we have internet problems, please bear with us.
Okay. All right. Can I first get a motion to accept last month's meeting minutes?
Motion to accept November minutes.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All set?
I'm also, yes.
Oh, Yolando, I'm so sorry. Like, Rob, a lot of things in my head this evening. All right. Um, no street acceptances, nothing from Evan. Rolling into the proposed zoning change, MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, presenting Mr. Rob May.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for taking time to hear this issue. As you may remember, at your last meeting, the city had referred to the Planning Board a MBTA Communities Form-Based Code draft proposal, which you did refer back to the City Council with a favorable opinion. Unfortunately, well, as it so happens, that City Council is gonna want to have some more time to review it. And that means that we are not going to be able to, we, the city, is not going to be able to meet the MBTA 3A Communities requirement of adopting by December 31st of this year. And so what we've proposed to City Council is a stopgap measure of a MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. And that is what is in front of you today. The objective is to approve a stopgap measure that will get us over the finish line, but, and in compliance, but it's not the, the end-all-beat-all zoning that we want. And I will start my presentation now, if you don't mind. Hopefully, everybody can see the screen here. The Commonwealth, back in 2022, passed the MBTA Communities Act. It's referred to as, you know, MGL Massachusetts General Law, 40R subsection, subsection 3A. It has a series of requirements, including a minimum zoning requirement of multifamily units, multifamily housing by right. There's a bunch of other stuff that we covered in our last meeting, but the key date is that the city of Brockton must be in compliance by December 31st, 2024, which is very near to us right now. We have received assistance from both the Commonwealth and the Mass Housing Partnership, and that's helped us with our Campello planning process and our soon-to-be-published Montello planning process. Similar to last week's, last month's slide presentation, the city reviewed our existing zoning ordinance, and we found that we were not in compliance, that we developed a compliance plan that was approved by the state. We've spent the last two years engaging the public in pulling together a zoning proposal that we feel not only meets the requirements of the MBTA 3A Communities Act, but also matches the neighborhood master plans that were developed by the communities over the last several years. And coming out of this process, you'll note that we have formally recommended that a form-based code be adopted. And again, unfortunately, we don't have time for the City Council to review the whole form-based code. And what they have asked us to do is come up with this stopgap measure. Tony has her hand raised.
Before I forget the question, why, why did we not start? Why, why are we starting so late to miss this deadline?
Well, we had been working on this for over two years, and the drafting of the form-based code language took a lot longer than anybody anticipated. It was very detailed in writing a whole new code over again. So that's why we're in this, this situation.
So is there any, like, possible extension request we could? Writing to?
There, there does not appear to be an extension request in, in any of my conversations with the Commonwealth, and they're hoping that we have a solution. And our solution to get us over that deadline is this form, is this overlay district, multifamily overlay district. It's our intention, though, that this overlay district is replaced sometime in the spring with our full form-based code zoning that we've developed over the last two years.
So when you said stopgap, what, can you be more specific? I'm not sure exactly what that means.
So what we're saying is that this is a Band-Aid. This is not what we want and what the community wants, but this is enough to get us to be in compliance while we're still working on this new zoning, the new form-based zone code, zoning code. And I see a couple more hands up.
So what, what are we going to be?
For just a second, so I can see the other hands going up.
I could take my down page of a couple of questions before I forget. I'm writing notes, but I, I don't want to end up with too many notes. So what, what are we losing with the stopgap? And then you mentioned just an overlay district. What's gonna be the, the difference? Are we losing?
The big difference is that it's not as rich in density and diversity of uses that a, that the form-based code is, is putting forward. It also does not include a lot of the building standards and district development standards that the form-based code does. It does not necessarily, it supports to a degree the master plans that have been developed in the neighborhood, but it doesn't support them to the fullest that the community would like to see them.
Could you give an example of that?
An example of that is, for example, in, in the overlay district, a we just meet the, the compliance requirement of 15 units per acre. And that's a, that's a piece of language that, that we're gonna address later on in the meeting that doesn't need to be in the zoning, but we meet that requirement. What form-based code does would be providing two or three times that density depending on the particular area that you're in within the form-based code. It also doesn't have any of the design guidelines and requirements, so it doesn't establish where parking would be located. It doesn't establish how active the first floor needs to be. It doesn't address any open space or public amenities that the form-based code does. So it's, it's a Band-Aid to get us over the end into compliance while we're waiting for, for this, for the review.
And then you mentioned Campello and then you, and Montello. It'll just be these two? Train stations and not downtown?
No, let me, let me take a step back. What we're proposing are for downtown and Campello. Where we got state assistance for is Campello and now Montello. We have not finished the Montello master plan, so we did not want to push zoning forward until we had the communities buy in on that master plan.
But we have funding for it, so it'll be included. And downtown is not because the funding is not there.
No, we have, we have a downtown proposal that you approved last, last meeting that, that deals with downtown and Campello. The, the previous slide simply said that we had gotten assistance from the state to help us comply, and that created the Campello master plan and the Campello zoning, which is being put forward and adopted and approved or recommended positively by this planning board for City Council's review. It does not include Montello because we're still in the, the planning process for Montello.
And is that gonna be done in time for this deadline?
It will not be done in time for this deadline. However, with Montello, or with Campello and downtown, we meet our requirements from, from the state.
Okay. Yolando had his hand up.
Yolando?
Yeah, Madam Chair, through you. My question is, so does this, if we vote in favor of this overlay district, would the, the City Council still has final approval? Is that what it is, or?
Yes, sir. So when an ordinance is introduced to City Council, when the zoning ordinance is introduced to City Council, it's referred to both the Planning Board for its review and, and recommendation and to the, the Ordinance Committee for its review and recommendation. Those two bodies hold public meetings and refer, make a, a vote based on that and refer that back to the full City Council. It has two more readings before they can vote on it. So there has to be three full readings that would put us, even if, if we were to fast-track form-based code, that would put us into January at this point. However, the Chair of the Ordinance Committee has asked for more time to review the ordinance because it is quite substantive, and it's a lot for the City Council to try to digest in a short period of time. And so that's why we came up with this overlay district to meet the requirements, but not have, it's the cake but not the icing, if that's a good, fairly good analogy.
But the, but the City Council will have to vote in favor of the overlay district.
It will. They will have to vote in, in favor of both of those at some point in time, if they are to take effect. And Madam Chair, there is an attendee who has a question, and I don't know, should we wait until the end of the presentation before we discuss that?
Sure, yeah.
There will be a public comment period while this is going on. So let me go back to the presentation.
I do have one question. Did, did we have a, a package or something to review on this prior to, or were we just? I, I don't think I saw that. Did anybody else?
Isaiah not send that out with your package?
I didn't, I didn't see it.
It didn't come out to, today, no.
Everything that you're saying is all new, so I don't, I don't, I feel a little bit.
This is gonna be a problem, then.
And it was reviewed on, were you on the special meetings on the 19th? Were you a part of that meeting, Jim?
That was the form-based. This is something.
This is the supplementary, essentially, but I didn't get anything on the supplementary.
It may not have made it to your packets, which means we should probably continue this section to another meeting date. It is a public hearing, so we need two weeks' notice for that. That is going to put us into, with the holidays, will probably put us into January, so it would probably make sense to have at your January 6th meeting the public hearing.
Trying to read what I, what we received today. We're already at a, at a, a deadline, so we're gonna.
Well, we are, but the law is the law. For public, you know, we did notice the public hearing. The information was on the web. Unfortunately, it didn't get sent to you in time to review it to make a appropriate decision this evening.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, could I say something?
Sure, Marty.
Rob, am I right in saying that we went through this in the last meeting in, in real detail? So, we did. So from, from you and us, it went to the City Council, and they're basically saying they haven't had enough time to review it.
Correct.
And now we're gonna go past the deadline. So you're trying to put some stopgap measure in place just to buy us some time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I don't see any reason why we can't move it forward. It's just a shortened version of what we already agreed upon.
So, an email from, from the staff here, from the Planning Department, says it's just a language review, so there most likely isn't a report. Is this not the language here on the agenda? Is this what we're voting on?
It is a six-page, pages of text and a couple of maps. It might make sense to, let me go through the presentation. If we would like to continue the public hearing until January, that is, that is your prerogative. Or if you feel that the presentation provided you with enough information to make a educated decision, we can live with that.
Okay. Yeah, let's, you guys, board members, do you mind just hearing the presentation? And if you're not comfortable, then we'll figure out what to do after we listen to the presentation. Anyone not in favor?
Well, here in the presentation, explain what it all is exactly. We didn't get that six-page document.
Yes, it will.
Okay, good.
So we'll proceed with continuing the presentation, Rob.
Let's continue the presentation, and then we can decide whether or not we want to continue. And housekeeping just showed up. So, as the slide says here, we have, City Council has asked for more time to review this and their, the, review the form-based code, and therefore, we will not have have met the December 31st deadline for compliance. If we're not in compliance, what happens is that we are not able to receive any state grants going forward until we are in compliance. Now, this is different from several communities who have voted against adopting the MBTA Communities Act, where the state is taking legal action. So these are two different situations. And I personally don't think that the state is going to take legal action against the, the city if they know that we're working on it and diligently working on this, and, and will have a compliance within a short period of time. So we are recommending this short-term stopgap.
I'm sorry, Rob. Here I go again, just because I'm, I'm already just a little concerned about the deadlines and that, what I just saw and read, that they're not gonna vote until after the 31st. We're running late. We didn't include all of the train stations. We now won't be in compliance, so we'll lose state grants, which means lose, lose huge revenue. But now you're saying that they won't take legal action against us, but they'll wait for us to be in compliance. So that means we can proceed after this deadline. I, I'm a little confused by that.
I'm, I'm comfortable, although we haven't received actual word from the Commonwealth, because we're at least working on this process, and they know that we are running up against this deadline. We've been in communication with them. They have not given us any indication that, you know, it, it is the end of the world, but it's, it always behooves us to try to get this process done as quickly as possible.
And, and because I work with the state, you know, different agencies and departments, but we, we, we put, we often, I often put in a written request for respectfully asking for an extension. And I think that we need to put something in writing, but I'll, I'll let you continue. Sorry.
We're done with this meeting. And again, if, for the public participants, when we open up the meeting to whoops, discussion, we will unlock microphones then. Right now, it's, it's just staff and the board having this conversation. As the slide says, we've created this temporary zoning compliance, which will get us over the, the finish line with the stopgap overlay. City Council still needs to review it and have its public hearings, but at least we have done our part in getting this, in getting this done. Now, the geography is slightly different than what was approved in the form-based code. It's not as extensive as the form-based code. It's not as rich and in-depth as the form-based code, but it, it gets us to compliance. Should also note that we are doing and will be coming forward to these, the City Council and to this board with a form-based code for the Montello neighborhood. That's going to probably be six months from now. The, the community is still in the planning process, and it's going to take a little while to get to there. We think that the, the planning process will be done sometime in February, so it would probably be March when this board sees that proposal. It's exactly the same proposal that you've already adopted or favorably recommended. It's just a mapping amendment at this point in time. So where do the new zoning districts get mapped? That's what will be discussed in front of you next time. Again, MBTA, this draft is stopgap overlay district. This should allow for a smoother review process because the consistency of the language has changed, is, is simple. We've used the MBTA's, excuse me, the Commonwealth's own sample zoning ordinance to create this. So it's basically the same text with a few minor changes to it to, you know, indicate Brockton, the Planning Board, and what Brockton's desires are. This overlay district, again, is proposed as a stopgap. And while in compliant, the ultimate purpose, proposed use, dimensional standards and development requirements are not as flexible as those that we are proposing in the form-based code. So there's A through J are the seven, are the sections that are referred to in this zoning ordinance overlay. Section A, it talks about the purpose of the ordinance, and that's to come into compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. It's to create and enhance walkable communities around neighborhood, walkable neighborhoods around MBTA stations. It's to support larger families in Brockton. It's to foster a variety of residential tenures, which means rental and for-sale housing. It's to, it's intended to maintain Brockton's affordability, and it's to promote the creation of mixed-use developments in the MBTA station areas. The Establishment and Applicability discusses how that this is a zoning overlay. It is an option for developers to use. The base zoning district still is, is the base. Developers can choose to develop under the base or may choose to use the zoning overlay, which is the same for all zoning overlays are, are built that way. And you need to refer to the zoning maps to understand where the boundaries are, and we'll get to those in just a second. And there they are. This is the downtown MBTA Communities Overlay District. Under state law, we have to have a districts that are contiguous and are buildable. So that's why we have a little bit different of a boundary here. You'll see it's much more of a series of polygons than it is a, a full zoning map from downtown. That's because this is only dealing with multifamily housing. It doesn't deal with any of the other issues that the form-based code does. You'll see the MBTA train station dead center. Whoops. For reference, this area is City Hall. This is the District Court, Superior Court over here. You have Perkins Park and stretching north. This is the MBTA yards and are the CSX rail yards, excuse me, and this is Court Street running east of downtown. And that is the same map with a ortho or view underneath it, so you can see the different buildings that are in this area. The Mont, or Campello neighborhood looks like this with the Campello train station in the center here. You have Field Park, or excuse me, Keith Park, excuse me, here, East Middle School or South Middle School. This line shows a quarter-mile radius from the train station, so it stretches all the way up to Nielsen on the north boundary and down just past. Trying to read where it goes down to. Just north of Sergeant's Way, which is down here. It's primarily on the west side of the tracks. There is some property where Walkover Commons is located, and some of the old Walkover Shoe Factory is in this area, or what, the, the remains of that shoe factory. And again, this doesn't match the same layout that the form-based code proposal is, because that's a much more detailed community map. This is what we need to, though, to, this is what will allow us to become compliant. And again, the same map with the ortho behind it. You can see the different buildings and, and various properties on the project. The zoning ordinance, the next section includes a series of definitions. Those are related to the, define the affordability of the units. It also sets definitions for multifamily and mixed-use development. It creates dimensional terms such as the building coverage, lot and open space, and it also in other term, and, and it also identifies that other terms that are not identified in this ordinance are defined in the general Brockton zoning ordinance. Permitted uses within this district would be multifamily housing and mixed-use, mixed-use projects, which is commercial on the first floor and residential above. Would also allow for renewable energy installations, which would be under a special permit process and would allow parking as an accessory use to the primary principal use of multifamily housing or mixed-use development. Dimensional standards are as follows. The minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet. The minimum, maximum height is three stories or 45 feet. Minimum amount of open space is 25%. The building coverage, which is the structure only, can only be 50% of the, of the total lot. The frontage of the lot needs to be at least 30 feet. The side, front yard setback is anywhere between 10 and 15 feet. The, um, side, front yard setback is anywhere between 10 and 15 feet. Um, 10 is the minimum, 10 is the max, 15 is the maximum. The side yard setbacks, um, we're proposing that you make a. In your recommendation that we fix this new, fix this language. That we have a minimum 10-foot setback on either side of the proper, uh, uh, either side of the building. And that the rear setback minimum is 10, is zero feet and the maximum setback is 10 feet. And we're also recommending that the language of density, residential density of 15 units per dwelling acre. Or 15 dwelling units per acre be stricken. From the language in that text. It was something that we included. Uh, it was not in the state's version of the text. We added it. State has asked us to delete it, um, because we don't need that language. Uh, the next section deals with off-street parking. And we're recommending that we, um, have for ma- multi-family, uh, housing, that you have two parking spaces per dwelling unit. And that you have one bicycle parking space for tw- uh, dwelling unit. And for mixed use. The non-residential or the commercial portions of a mixed-use development would have one space per 300 square feet. And then one parking space per 500 square feet of development. We do have some minor development standards and that requires. For projects that are eight units or more. Um, and consist of more than 25,000 square feet or more. That there are some, uh, we go through a site plan review process. That we look at the, the site design, the planning board would look at the site design, the planning board would also look at. The buildings, um, their. And how they fit into the overall community. We'll look at how the plan is parked. Um, it, is it sufficient parking? Is it accessible? Um, and then there's a series of waivers that are established for, um. That establish flexibility for better design or unusual circumstances. The next issue is, uh, affordability requirements. Uh, and multi-family development with 10 units or more. Should have at least 10% of their units available to people. Who make 80% of the area mean, uh, median income. Uh, the properties must be eligible to be, uh, listed under the state subsidized housing inventory with the Commonwealth. And there are, should be standards for the integration into the overall development. Uh, they can't be, uh, affordable housing can't be, uh, a separate series of, of. Of, of, of structures or of units. They have to be integrated into the whole project. So. You can't tell which unit is affordable and which one is not affordable. And then the last, uh, we want to say is that we're requesting that the planning board refer the MBTA Communities Overlay District back to the city council. With a positive recommendation, subject to the following edits. And we're asking you that you strike, uh, I recommend that we strike the language in subsection E. Dimensional standards for the minimum residential density of 15 units per acre. That's a. Uh, an issue that the state brought to our attention, that the. Uh, simply by being in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, uh, as the zoning states. We don't need to mention that again. So it's. Uh, it's just better to, to take it out so not to create additional confusion. And then, um, in subsection E, dimensional standards. We've asked that you include a minimum side yard standard of 10 feet. And that's on both sides of the, of the property.
Rob, excuse me. So striking subsection E means we're not.
Well, not the full subsection, just this language in subsection E. And let me go back to that language. This is, this is basically the tables of, uh, standard dimensions table from that subsection E. And so we're asking that we add the language about the minimum si- uh, minimum. Side yard setback and that we strike this other language about the corner and the interior setbacks. And then this language about the minimum zoning, uh, residential density maximum of 15 units per acre.
So that means you, it can be more, more or less, we're not, we're not dictating that.
Yes, and, and it depends on how the lot is built out as opposed to. A, a, a written standard saying what can be on the property because if. You can only cover the property, 50% of the co- property is covered by building. You have to provide for parking. That automatically determines the, the number of units that you can build on the property and we don't need to mention that again. Oops, sorry. And then, um, we ask that there be the so, uh, the following statement added to your referral back. And that the planning board, uh, that statement is the planning board request that the city council. Brockton City Council review and approve the MBTA Communities Form-Based Code to replace the stopgap MBTA. Uh, Communities Overlay District at its earliest convenience. Uh, again, since you have not seen the actual text. And this has just been a bad week, bad month for the planning board and I apologize for that. We can, um, either continue the public hearing into January. Um, at your January. First January meeting, which is. Trying to find my calendar. Oh, January 7th, excuse me. Thank you. Um, or we can. Have further discussion and I, quite frankly, I, I think without you seeing the text. It's a disservice to you. And, um, I would recommend that we continue this till January.
Well, we've heard the presentation. It was detailed. Um, does, do board members have other questions?
I do. So I, I just want to confirm that. So there will be no state grants until we're in compliance, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, so if we approve this stopgap. Code, um, would the. Oh, sorry Marty, I'm seeing a big picture of your eye and a little distracted. Sorry. Um, so if we do get this approved. Um, and then we go, the city council still approved the, uh, the code that we approved on the last meeting. Or recommended?
Um, we're hoping that city council will, will do that. It'll be sometime after January. When they do that, uh, they've asked me to hire a couple of consultants to help them, um, digest this. 300 and some page ordinance. Um, that's a lot of text. It's, it's. It's a new beast for them and I can understand their, uh, their reluctance to take this on fate. Um, and that's why we've come up with this stopgap proposal. But our recommendation, I'm re- requesting that our recommendation back to the city council is that. They adopt this, um, overlay district. As a stopgap, but then come back to the full form-based code, um, at their earliest convenience.
So, okay, perfect. So city council members will still have the opportunity to go back to form-based code even if we. Are, are good with. Code that we're discussing today.
And we will, we will. That it, that by adopting one, it, it negates the other.
And we're sure that we're going to be able to do that if, because we're, right now the stopgap would be half of the plan, not as extensive. So half of the revenue, less revenue. Are we sure that we're going to be able to go back to the full ba- base code?
Right.
If this is accepted.
Um, yes, that is our intention is to go back to the full code and that's why we wrote this without all the bells and whistles that the form-based code provides. Because the community will want. The form-based code, the, the, the design guidelines and the certainty on development that the form-based code provides. Developers will also want the flexibility and the increased in residential density that the form-based code would, uh, provides.
And then you said, uh, Montello would be. Well, you have a plan for Montello to be included in this within six months. Is that? A guarantee? Because they, it, that, that has the most, uh. Land and opportunity for development compared to downtown or even Montello.
You, you're right. It, it does have more, uh, available, um, land for development. Um, with less uses that are. In operation. Um, it is our intention. We've been working with the two ward counselors. Counselor Shirley Asak and counselor Jack Lally in the planning process along with a. Community advisory group, um, to help guide us through the public meetings and the draft of the plan. And so that should be, the plan should be complete in, in February. And the zoning would be introduced into, um, city council in March, right after that.
So this six-month plan for Montello will be written into this plan. So it's going to be approved and be part of what. The council's going to approve ordinance and the state.
Um, yes. So what, the city council has two different ordinances in front of it at the moment. Um, for form-based code. One is the text amendment. Which explains what you're allowed to do, what the design standards are. Then there's a second ordinance that's a map amendment that says. This new district. The mixed-use district, one, mixed-use district two, mixed-use district three are mapped in these particular pieces of property.
Okay.
This ordinance is in front of you right now also has two, two forms. The first one is. The, uh, text amendment and the second one is the map amendment.
Okay. Madam Chair, could I say something?
Sure, go ahead Marty.
Rob.
Yes ma'am.
Am I, am I to understand this correctly? That this is just a stopgap measure to get us through so we can hit that deadline? The city council is going to, it's, this is insane, this is an insane amount of change for the city of Brockton. So for the city council to, to adopt a whole new zoning code is, is phenomenal, but it's also huge. So it's going to take them some time.
Yeah.
So this, and they're not going to do it easily, trust me. So, and I wouldn't either if I were them. So just the way we hesitated about all this. So this is just a simplified version just to get us through and they'll, and they're going to understand that by the language, right?
Yes. It, it's the, I, I don't want to do an analogy of General Motors, but you know, the form-based code is the Cadillac. And this, uh, overlay district is the Chevy. It's built on the same frame. But it doesn't have all the things that everybody wants.
So they're going to understand that, they're going to understand that this is not the whole picture.
Yes.
And that's going to be changed in the end.
God willing, yes.
With the, I mean, God willing or are we, do we know, Rob?
Well, it's up to city council to vote on it.
So, have other towns, um, towns or cities already complied with this state's, um, deadline and. And have been moving right along?
Yes, there's several communities that are already in compliance and have, have made those votes. There are also several communities who have chosen to vote against compliance with the form-based, uh, with, uh, MBTA Communities Act.
Well, I'd like to see us in the forefront, uh, bigger the city and we are in this much revenue and, and we've been, I've been on the board how many years and. You know, this is a great opportunity to finally, like, bring huge revenue. Um, not going to be the only one complaining about what my tax bill is for 2025.
It was a Herculean effort to get to where we are with the form-based code. And it took a lot longer than we anticipated.
We, we were so slow, I'm sorry, uh, we were so slow with the, um, recreational marijuana shops. We were the last one to do it. We should have been the first one. Everybody thought it was going to be a big deal, a problem. It's been nothing but a peaceful businesses adding revenue. To our community. We, we need to be on the forefront and not on the end of the paddy wagon. It's, it's just doesn't, I don't know, we got to do better. I really feel like we need to do better. Um, Jim, did you have any questions?
Madam Chair, I, I have a question. Do we need a sunset date for the stopgap measure? Like. This stopgap is let, like you said, Rob, is less reflective of the community vision. That was established for the Campelo master planning process and the form-based planning, uh, zone, community engagement in general, like. Um, I would hate for the Band-Aid to become what's permanent.
I, I would also, but I would also not want to. Have city council put a stopgap. It may take them a little bit longer than that stopgap and then we've got to vote on that again. And we have to go through the public hearing process and you've got to hear that and they've got to hear that and, um, it's. Probably easier just to leave it as it is. With the understanding that we want them to come back and get this.
Can, can you let us know when that meeting, when they're having their meeting, please?
Oh yes, we will.
So, uh, Madam Chair, if I could.
Yes.
Assuming we did vote on this tonight, when does it hit city council?
We will be able to, assuming that you vote on it tonight, we will be able to refer it back to city council. Um, for their. Um, next meeting, which is the. 13th.
Do they have this now? Are they able to review this now? Kind of like.
They have the language also, yes. So they received the full language and that's where it gets referred to. The planning board and to the ordinance committee.
Okay, because I could see, you know, if we don't delay it, they're going to delay it anyways. That's kind of where I'm trying to get at. If that was the case.
No, they understand the deadlines that we're up against and we've been working very closely with the chair of the ordinance committee. Um, councillor Farwell, um, who has been very amenable to, uh, to this whole process. Um, and we've kept him briefed throughout the, the planning process. So. He knows that, that we're running up against the deadline, but, um, they are doing the, the best job that they can to get this done.
And in your opinion, you think this is a, a few months that we're going to have this? Up to what, March, you said? Before we have the full.
Well, no. We should be done with downtown and Campelo by the end of January at the latest. With, with this overlay district. The form-based code is going to take a little bit wa- longer. I don't know how long that's going to take. I think we should be able to get it done within six months. And replace the overlay with the new form-based code that, that would be adopted in six months.
Thank you.
I won't take a step back. I had the wrong date. If, if you vote on it this evening, um, our recommendation would go to city council for the meeting on the 9th.
9th, okay. Well, I would like to see it to get, get to them, um.
I'd like to make a motion to move it favorably.
Well, no, we have to open it up to public first, but any other questions from board members? Okay. Rob, does anyone have their hands up?
Um, yes. So ladies and gentlemen, uh, of the public, if you'd like to speak on this proposal. Um, or, or join the discussion, please use the raise your hand icon. Um, and we will unlock your microphone and right now I have. Mr. Greg Belcher available and I'm going to open your microphone, sir, and you are now able to address the board.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman and Chair, Chair, all the directors on the board here. I'm in the Montello Business Association. I attended most of these, um, meetings. And I had questions for. Bob and, and some of his staff. And the question was, um, services. How do we get, we're going to, I don't know how much revenue that is projected from the grants. That's going to bring to the communities because it's going to bring more housing, more police, more fire. More ambulances. And our school department is right now in a financial crisis. So is there going to be money out of this whole planning process to, um. Go, to go to these certain divisions of the city?
Um, once the, uh, new development occurs, they will be paying, um. Uh taxes like every other um. Property owner and because they're new properties and potentially larger properties, we should see some substantial tax growth from those properties.
And and with the setbacks that are now, you're trying to do ten feet when I think it's right now it's zoned as twenty? Um are we gonna look more like Chelsea?
Well, we won't look quite like Chelsea, but we'll, because uh we will have a higher density. Chelsea has a lot um smaller setback, building setback, um but we will see an increase in density. That's if developers choose to develop multifamily housing.
And will the developers also help our infrastructure? We just had a pedestrian hit up in our area at North Main in Battles uh this morning at seven AM. And the person has passed away as of the news uh channel today. So my heart's out to the family, but we have to do something about our sets of lights in in the community. Right now, they're not even up to standard.
That is true, and that's why being in compliance with the ordinance will allow us to apply for more state grants to um. Uh address those infrastructure shortages either through the State Streets For All um uh program or the um. Uh state's safety improvement program.
Now, can the state and safety improvement be done before we do development?
Um if we're in compliance, yes. We can always apply for those grants uh um as long as we're in compliance.
Cuz you know, I'm all for for around taxes and you know, I've always pushed forward and and attended these things, so. Um I I wanna help people to get their own property, you know, we all do because it's a crisis out here. We have the homeless. We have a lot of things going on in the city and I know we need revenue, but we need to also think of the safety and security of our children.
That is very true.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I also have. Hang on, I'm just saying one. Um Jonathan, I'm sorry, I just Shan- Shanahan? I'm gonna open up your microphone, sir.
Hi, good af- or good evening, everyone. How are we all doing? Um so my name's Jonathan. Um I've been working with a group over the past two years to also look at the. Questions posed um by the state and the, we've been working to try to create some districts for Brockton. That would also be in compliance with um the section three A guidelines. Um I have recently got my master's degree in data science, so although I am not an expert in zoning or the city of Brockton in particular. I do have a passion for visualizing data, understanding the meaning and making sure that things are represented properly. I had a couple of points that I wanted to mention about what is being proposed tonight. Um the first thing was I have been recently looking at the districts that are proposed for the temporary overlay district. And um the immediate thing that popped out to me, especially after sitting through the presentation today as concerning. Is when you look on the department's website, under the temporary overlay district. The maps that were presented as well as the zoning parameters are not up to date with what just came out. Um the maps that were online that I was using as a reference did not include the half mile radius around the transit stations. That is fundamental to the compliance with the law. As well as some of the zoning parameters that I myself tried to use to determine if these districts would be in compliance are not the same. As what was just presented to me, which is alter what I have to say a little bit because based on what was previously. Um posted, I personally found that at that point, what was published would not be in compliance. With the changes that are proposed, um especially with the minimum density. I do not at this point have the ability to say whether it would or not. But when I initially determined that things would not be in compliance, it was due to um using state published compliance models. I just inputted the information that I was provided with. Um but that in and of itself points to the bigger issue of. In the attempt to inform not only the public, but it also looks like this board. Um the due diligence wasn't done to make sure that everybody who could possibly be interested would have the necessary information. Um for example, with the map specifically in the half mile radius, if you were looking and trying to find spots around a train station. That you could work additional land into the districts without the reference online for a half mile. It would be very difficult for somebody to be able to do that um without the intimate knowledge of. Um the day to day proceedings of people trying to work on this with the city. Um but moving past the issues with the posting, I found a couple of things questionable. With the temporary overlay districts. I personally with the, since the shapes of the districts that were posted online that I found. Are seemingly accurate to what was presented tonight. I used a mapping software to digitize these districts on my own and use state published resources such as information about all of the lots. As well as different things with like excluded and sensitive lands to um basically go through a quicken process myself. Um I also was able to get some information from the twenty twenty census specifically relating to demographics. As well as um homeownership rates. Um the first thing that really stood out to me as not being ideal is that if you look at the downtown district. Um the census tract that has the lowest homeownership rate in all of Brockton at only seven percent. Um that being owner occupied housing units has gotten the vast majority of the land in the downtown district. Um I understand that downtowns are meant to be bustling, but it seemed especially with the inclusion. Or exclusion of the Montello district, which is has some of the highest. Um percentages of owner occupied housing units in Brockton. It seemed like a lot of that was just being shoved into a smaller area. Uh it does also overlap with um some of the downtown districts and Montello specifically, whereas Montello has higher percentages of white residents. Um so it just seemed a little jarring that the only train station to not be included in the plan. Um for the temporary status is the one that has um higher rates of white residents and higher rates of people owning their own properties. Especially seeing that there are multiple schools, I think it was two elementary schools and a middle school within a reasonable distance from the Montello station. Um but then when you also take into the things such as crime statistics, um I was not able to get any. Census like data about crime since it doesn't exist, but if you look at crime statistics that are aggregated from FBI sources. That same census tract that has the seven percent homeownership is also one of the most violent in terms of like violent crime. Um census tracks in Brockton, so especially when this whole. Um law and the spirit of the law comes down to trying to make multifamily areas for families especially. It does not seem to me that you would build a great neighborhood by putting people in a place that people already don't own their homes. That is plagued by violence compared to the rest of the city. Um on top of all of that, um with the districts themselves, like I said, the um changes to. The zoning parameters that were mentioned today do probably change the results of the state provided compliance notebook that I've been working with. So I can't anymore speak to whether what is proposed would be compliant or not. But um even with this, I did have some concerns with the selection of the lots. Um everything does seem to check off all the parameters in terms of like um. The district size and district size within a half mile of a train station, which are. Statistics that the state will check, but the districts don't seem like they were necessarily built with multifamily housing in mind. Uh for example, if you look at both the downtown and Campello districts together. Overall, twenty eight percent of the lots that are included are too small for multifamily housing per the guidelines that were presented today. Um they are smaller than the minimum lot size included. Um and when you go into the, I believe it was the Campello district, it goes to almost thirty percent of the lots not being conforming. So even if with the changes being made, you could technically hit compliance. Again, it is not in the spirit of the law, in my opinion, to be creating. A multifamily housing district where one in three properties included are not suitable for this development. Um I know that there is a sense of urgency for Brockton to become compliant with the guidelines presented by the state. But if this wasn't all rushed, there was even a avenue that the state offered. For what they called a pre-adoption review of the plan, which basically before the city had to vote, you would submit everything to the state. And they would draft a letter back to you explaining all of the reasons why you would not be in compliance or things that they think that you should look at. To ensure that you are maximizing the districts and not, for example, putting a significant portion of a district in a sensitive land. Which if you look at the Campello map um towards the southwest, there is a significant amount of that district. That is in a sensitive area um per the state. But um with all of this together, I think that A, if this whole process wasn't rushed. Would have been able to get a lot more concrete guidance on where things are gonna go wrong. Where they wouldn't, I think there were like something like thirty states or thirty um communities within the state that went through this process to get that feedback. But also just with the, how rushed this seems to be, not properly informing the public. Even now having inaccurate information posted online, I do think it puts you all in a difficult position. Because there is a lot of grants that could be lost from the city. But I just don't think that it is appropriate to rush something through that is not in the best interest. Of those making the decision. I think that there's things such as Montello being seemingly the best area to put families and lots of families not being included. Versus getting rid of one of the other train stations if the thought was you didn't want to rush one. From my perspective, if you had to focus on two, there's the most potential around the Campello and Montello stations, so. I don't know, there's just a lot of things from my perspective as as somebody who has been working on something adjacent to this. For a while, that I just wanted to speak up and make sure that my perspective was heard. Because I have a lot of information that I would be happy to share with anyone who doesn't feel like they've been informed enough, but I just don't. Know if the whole conversation that has to be had has been had, so. Please reach out to me if you have any questions about anything I said, but um that was all I had. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Sheen. We're gonna get to two other, three other people coming up shortly. Uh the next is Lisa Crowley. And I am going to open your microphone now. Ms. Crowley, you should be able to address the board.
There we go, I think we're on. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, um thank you very much for um all the time you've uh you guys put onto the planning board. My name is Lisa Crowley and I live at two fifty Howard Street, um which is about, you know, a half a mile uh from the Montello station. And I'm just interested in the whole thing. I'm just wondering if there's been any conversations with the business owners down there. As to what they would like to see done. Um it's very industrial at the moment. I don't know if they are planning on putting in high density uh multifamily units or not. When you go past Intervale Street, you've got a lot of single family homes, three family homes, all kinds of conversions. I think, I wondered, I guess to to, my question is, is there any consideration from this board? Or maybe at the city council to maybe join some of the other communities who are against this. Maybe just to play it out longer so we can get a better grasp of what we actually really wanna do down there. Um the Lithuanian village would be wonderful to develop, but if we're gonna get packed in with huge buildings. You know, ten feet from the roadway, I I just don't know if this city can handle any more density than we're already getting. With all of the services, schools, police, fire, zoning, inspectional services. Um but that's about it. Thank you.
Um hang on, just, I am writing a note um to Mr. Sheen and hang on just a second. And I just misspelled his name, so I apologize for that. So Mr. Sheen, if you could respond to the um chat. Um we're hoping to get your phone number so that we can contact you and discuss this in more detail. Um, thank you, Ms. Crowley. Uh the next person who would like to speak is Veronica Stevens. And I'm opening her microphone now. Ms. Stevens, you should be allowed to, able to speak now.
Jim, you know how much I love to talk. I just don't like talking pug bookly, but um actually, I wanted to speak with you since the last meeting. I did ask you to call, please call me. In regards to this. I don't like Band-Aids. I loved the plan you put forward. And I looked online trying to find the paperwork that was to follow this meeting tonight and I couldn't find it. So I ended up going over the one hundred and ninety five pages that are up there. And trying to figure out what you were changing, so I spent a lot of time spinning my wheels. Yes, your presentation is concise, it tells us that basically we're getting very little of what we wanted. You're absolutely right, but I'm afraid Band-Aids fester. It was mentioned that there should be a sunset date. I, you know what? I've been working with the city for a while now and I can tell you deadlines don't seem to mean much. So even one for the city council should at least be put out so that they know they've gotta get something done. Personally, I don't think this should go forward. Personally, I think that a request from the state for an extension is the best idea I've heard tonight. Because what you've already invested, the time, the two years. The this maybe three, four months that it's gonna take to finish what you've started with the form based zoning. Is well worth holding on to. And I think you need to put your foot down and say, look, the city council wants more time, you've got what you've got. And this should be the opportunity for the city council to make an extra meeting. You know, get together and see what they can do about finding out more about it. I sat through the meeting last wo- last month. None of them were here. I was the only speaker. I mean, I was shocked, but it's a great plan and I don't think stopgap is. I think anytime you've had a developer, if they see that you're passing this. How long is it gonna take them to try and understand what they can do, what they can't do, get it to planning, get it through zoning, get it through the planning board? And and get it in action. Anything gonna go through on this stopgap within three months? I don't think so. So it's not worth putting a Band-Aid out when it's not even a functional Band-Aid. Nobody's gonna be able to develop in that timeframe. I think honestly, the state needs to look at what you have put in, the work that you've done. And the form ba- based zoning and help us stay with our, stay with our grants, give us a little leeway. And credit you for what you've already put into it, the two years. We're not a city that's looking not to change. We're not looking to say no to all of the development. We're looking to embrace it. But we gotta do it right and Band-Aids don't do it right. There were a couple of the things, I mean, what questions does the city council have? Maybe they should make their questions public, give everybody a chance to comment on it. We had public meetings, some of the counselors were there. If they didn't understand then, maybe they should have been asking the questions then. I mean, you know, hold somebody's toes to the fire because we gotta move forward. We can't keep moving backwards and that's what Band-Aids do. And the fact that you didn't get it, the planning board didn't get. And the fact that you didn't get it, the planning board didn't get it to review it, even more reason for it not to be voted on tonight. If nothing else, you have to postpone till the next meeting because I would like a chance to really read it. And one thing I've learned and I've said before, if you don't know what you're voting on, don't vote. It's safer that way for everybody. And I do appreciate the efforts and the time that you guys put into reading what you've got to vote on. Don't vote without having the materials to vote on. It, it just, it doesn't look right for you. It doesn't look right for the city and it certainly wouldn't put the planning board at the best light. So I think a continuance is from the state is what we really need to be seeking. And I think a deadline, even for us, if, if, you know, if the city, if the state says, look, we'll give you six months. Know that six months really means we got to have it done in three because the council's going to want that much time to look at. Rightly so. I'm not saying they shouldn't. But I think we really need to pull together and make it work. Form-based zoning has the best option for the city long term. And this stop gate, stop gap isn't gonna, it isn't going to benefit anybody except for the little thing called time. And I'd rather see everybody put a break on building for the three months than somebody try to slip something in, you know, half baked because they've got three months to do it until this zoning changes. Let's just do it right. You know, this isn't right. This definitely is not right. Thank you all. Thank you for the time to talk. Please, Rob, give me that phone call.
Yes, ma'am.
Sooner rather than later.
I'm on vacation, but I'll, I'll do it tomorrow morning.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody. You're, we're, we're in your hands as a city.
Again, Mr. Sheen, I have, I'm sending you a, a message in the chat. If you could respond to that message and provide us with your phone number, we would love to be able to get ahold of you.
He, he put his phone number in the Q and A.
Oh, thank you very much. I'll go over there and look for it. Also, for everyone else who's on board or on this meeting, you should see a message in the chat. I hope that that is coming through. If not, I will put it in, I have put it into the chat. And if not, we'll move it over to the Q and A. But I've sent, I put in links to the actual language and the maps that were referred to. So I know Ms. Stevens said that she was having some problems finding it. And I want to make sure that we all can get to it as it, as it becomes available. Next person speaking is Artrilio. I am butchering your name because I can hardly, it's too small for me to read. I'm sorry. I apologize. I am opening your microphone now.
Attilio, can you unmute yourself? You're ready. Attilio, you just need to unmute your mic.
No, that was something I did. Hang on, let me open and begin.
Okay, you're, you're back. There you go. Yes, hello.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. Rob, why don't you have a plan for Montello? I mean, that's one thing that we, we like to know.
We're in the middle of doing a plan for Montello. We just received money from the state at the beginning of this fiscal year, which is in June. We've pulled together a community advisory group of, of residents and property owners and business owners. And we've had several advisory committee meetings and we've also had meetings, a community meeting. And I, Evan, could you possibly look at the date for the community meeting? But we'll get to that. So we have been meeting with people. It's just taking, it's, it's, we got money two years ago to do the Campelo plan. We got money this year to do the Montello plan. It's a matter of when we have money to be able to do it. So I apologize that, that we didn't have the money earlier. I would have loved to have been able to do that, but it is, it is on its way.
Yes, yes, but to comply with the state, I mean, don't you think that we should do it for Montello to Campelo? Because it's just like, it's just like Boston. We must look at Boston. We are a city. We're not a town. You know, we, we have to look at Boston. If we do Montello and do Campelo also, sooner or later we'll meet each other. You know, because we must expand from one side of the city to the other side.
Yes.
You know?
To, to answer some of that question is that it, it would be sort of a top-down approach if we were to just arbitrarily as a city say, you know, this is, this is the district without discussing it with the property owners and the residents. I think that they all deserve to have a say in how this gets played out. And so that's why we are still working on the Montello plan.
Yeah, but we, we had months, we had months to do this. I mean, the thing is, I, I understand that, because now you want to push it to January, January comes, you want to push it to April. I mean, it's going to take forever. I mean, this is something that needs to be done. I mean, cities are doing it and, and we should look, like I said, we should look at Boston and say, you know what? We should be, just like Manino did Boston, that's how we should do Brockton. Because people are moving out of Brockton because there's nothing here. I mean, and, and sometimes us developers, we, we want to develop here in, in Brockton, but when we go in front of the boards, you guys shut us down and, and everything else. I mean, it's not right. I mean, I understand if you, if you want to, if you want to live in a residential area, there's plenty of residential areas in Brockton, but around the train station, we should concentrate. And, and I'm sure the sta, the, the state has done the study on this. You know, I mean, the, 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 the state has done the study on this and we can see that the state is saying, you know what? This is the best scenario to do this. And we should go forward and say, you know what? Let's get the grant from the, from the state and, and, and develop Brockton, like we should be developing Brockton.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Yeah.
The next person is AA. And I'm going to ask you to identify yourself when we turn on the microphone. So we know who you are for the record because it's very important that we keep track of who is speaking. So AA, you should be able to speak now. If you just let us know who you are, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Francesca Alves Heinz. And I'm a resident.
Your last name, please?
Alves Heinz. Would you like me to spell it?
Could you please? I'd appreciate it.
A is an apple, L, V, E, S, hyphen, H, I, N, E, S.
Thank you very much.
How are you?
Very well. Please let us know, or please, please address the board now.
So I guess my concern is since we are not meeting the requirements and we're not in compliance, if we do not adopt the form that was presented by the state, if there are repercussions such as not receiving any grants going forward, is there a plan of action for if that happens?
I don't think anyone is contemplating not coming into compliance as quickly as possible.
Okay, so if, is it possible for a city council to become more informed with the long form? And would it be possible to come into compliance without an extension or is an extension absolutely necessary?
I think at this point in time, given the holiday schedule, we will probably be seeing a request for extension. It's just Christmas week and New Year's Eve week are difficult to hold public meetings. I do not know the council's schedule. But it's, it is possible to get a good deal of this material done. I don't know if there's enough time to have the two additional meetings and two, two additional city council meetings. Plus, there needs to be at least two weeks to advertise a city council public hearing. And so that would put us automatically into the week of the twenty-third. So it, it looks like this will, it looks like this will roll over into January.
Okay, also, the stopgap, I'm not in favor of. I think we should vote on it the correct way and make sure that we try to come into compliance. Are there any other towns that you know of that applied for an extension and were given it?
But that doesn't mean there aren't any.
Okay, so again, in the event that we are not in compliance and we do lose state funding, is there any planning for that?
We have not submitted any new grant applications yet, so I don't foresee us losing anything in the near future.
Okay, it's good to know.
And, and thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Hang on just a second. I want to ask the general public if, if you're able to see the chat that was addressed to everybody that has four Google Drive files, hyperlinks. I know that the board sees those automatically. I don't know if the public sees those. If the public does not see those, we'll have to put that into the Q and A. So I'm going to ask Veronica if she sees those.
I do see them. I'm just afraid to click it because I don't want to leave the meeting.
If you right-click and open in a different window, it should be fine. But you're right. And, and I'll leave it open for a couple of minutes after the meeting just to allow you time. Yes, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Veronica. Ms. McLean, I'm going to open your microphone and you should now be able to address the board.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, thank you for having me. My concern would be to look at towns and cities. Learn from Boston because Boston is very congested. Think about the traffic and those things and just getting around the city as well as safety. So I'm in the Montello area, so that would be my concern with the traffic. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask Evan, if you could go to the Montello section of our webpage and post that link in the chat for everyone using that everyone tag or Isaiah, whoever can get to it first. It has a list of the meeting minutes and when the next meeting minute, next meeting will be posted on there. So that'll be a way for you to keep track of that if you didn't already have that. So thank you very much for that. And Mr. Sheen, Mr. Sheen, you're back online.
Thank you. I just had a couple of quick comments to make after some of the stuff that we just heard. First off, I can confirm that those links do work that were sent in the chat for everyone. However, that goes back to what I was mentioning before, the map that was sent in the chat does not have the half-mile zone and the the file that has the zoning parameters that were changed in this meeting or proposed to be changed in this meeting are not yet reflected on that. So I still think that those do not accurately reflect the most recent proposals. The other thing too is I don't know how long the timeline goes for the city dealing with these proposals. Like I said, I'm not an expert in the operations of the city of Brockton. But I know at least the proposal that I was working on, we ourselves determined that it would be in compliance without any assistance from the state. So there is always that possibility that there could be something flagged that wasn't. But we've, I believe, submitted a proposal and I don't know if it's been discussed, but we have something on the books that we believe would be in compliance that does include more than enough land, more than enough units and does encompass all three train stations. So I was just also wondering if other alternate proposals were being considered or whether that was something that just wasn't getting moved through the city bureaucracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheen. One thing I do want to address right off the bat is that the language that is online through that link is the original language that was submitted to city council. When, and when the planning board votes and if they choose to amend that language in their recommendation, that new language will then post, be posted on that page also. But the original document will stay the same. You'll see then a new document with the markup of what the city, of what the planning board said. And then as we go through city council, if they have markups, that will also will be posted. So each time there's a new, there'll be a new document to, to follow through. You're right, the only different, the two maps, the one that was presented this evening does have a half-mile radius on it. The other ones do not, but the overlay boundaries are identical. And one last point that I wanted to make to the planning board is that the consultant who has helped us develop this proposal, Ennis Associates, is also the consulting firm that the state used to build the compliance model. So we are, once that language, about the fifteen units per acre is removed, we will be in conformity or within compliance. So is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? Please use the raise your hand icon. And we will open up your microphone for you to be able to address the board. Councilor Nick Castro, I am opening your microphone now.
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to echo what Jonathan Sheen and Veronica Stevens said. Planning board is a very important board in every city, but especially in the city of Brockton. And you have every right to review the language of this very important document. Stopgap measure or permanent measure or whatever. And so I, I have no wish to defend our taking, the city council taking its time in working on this because we want to get it right. Again, the zoning hasn't changed since the mid nineteen sixties. Yes, it's high time, but it's got to be right. So I just wanted to say, you don't have to rush to, to decision, especially because you didn't see it. You know, you had a good thumbnail review on which to base, to base your understanding as you go over it. But, you know, take your time and do the right thing so that when someone asks you, why did you vote for it? It's not, oh, because we might lose some money. Because I don't think we will lose some money. I think we'll be fine. And money can't always drive the decisions. Money is very important in a gateway city, but you, we've got to get it right. And you're all, your board is very important. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Councilor Nick Castro. There we go. I just want to say I do agree with Councilor Nick Castro. I, we've had several glitches in the We've had several glitches in the planning department this last month. Um, and I apologize for that. Some of it is, um, people being, um. Dislocated from original offices, um, but that's no excuse for not making sure the material was posted online. Or that the material was, um, sent to your, your, um. Sent in your packets. And so we will be addressing those internally. Um, but, um, I, I would recommend continuing. Um. And anybody else who would like to address the board, please, uh, use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen and we will unlock your microphone.
And, um, if I could just add at seven thirty, so please no redundant, um, comments or questions or please, thank you.
And at the moment, I do not have any other, um, hands raised.
Okay. So I also agree with Veronica Stevens and Council Castro. Um. This is a big deal for us. It's, I'm going to be redundant saying it's too bad. We didn't have all of our ducks in a row sooner. But, um, we need to do it right. This is a opportunity for a lot of revenue. Um. So with that said, I would like to see it done to the full capacity to include Montello. Um, and not the Band-Aid, uh, approach as you first mentioned, Rob. Board members, anything else before we, I ask for a motion?
Motion to postpone in January.
Second.
I can.
Okay.
I can.
Roll call, Yolando?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony? Yes, with the, um, understanding that we're going to put out an extension request immediately. Uh, I'll pull in there that is the holidays. I think that was a silly deadline to, to. Although I don't know how many, how much time we were given for all of this, but still, but New Year's Eve has a deadline. And, uh, maybe you can throw in the, the council that you hired, you said that helped state develop this, throw their name in there. Maybe they will also, um, be able to put in a good word for the extension. So we can do this with the full plan with all three MBTA areas. Okay. Getting back to the agenda. Notes everywhere, um, Oak Hill Way extension request. Is there a motion?
I pick a motion to extend it.
Second.
All right, uh, Yolando?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. Thank you.
The chairman, Isaiah from staff has a, has his hand up, Isaiah?
Hey, hey, board, um, you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
I was going to say that, um, this project in particular was, um, uh, it was already extended by the master, by the governor. Um, I just kind of wanted to make you guys aware that, um, I don't know, but it looks like you guys are accepted anyways. So I think it's okay.
Okay, good. Okay, then thank you for that, Isaiah. Um, is there a motion to for continuance for two forty-four, two fifty-two Warren Ave?
Motion to continue.
Second.
All right, Yolando?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. Okay, next we have returned to ZBA, four fifty-four Copeland Street, uh, JK Holmgren Engineering, Scott here.
Just Scott is here. I am promoting him to panelist. He should be coming over any second now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, board members, good evening.
Uh.
Scott. I should have Attorney Nazarell with me as well, Rob. Uh.
Remember, if I turn him on, turn his microphone on, it's going to cost money. Just kidding. Mr. Nazarell, Attorney Nazarell, you are, um, transferring over now.
Now on the time clock.
All right, perfect. Thank you, folks. Uh, what we have before you is, uh. A petition to return to the ZBA for property at four fifty-four Copeland Street. Uh, you folks approved a subdivision plan, uh, back a few months ago to divide the property. Uh, the front of the property is at four fifty-four Copeland Street. We're hoping to divide the back of the property, deed the back of the property over to the Skyview Village. Over fifty-five, uh, retirement development. And, uh, once that went through the ZBA, we would then be be back, back before the planning board. For a modification to a previous, uh, special permit to allow that over fifty-five development. Uh, so as I said, you folks approved the definitive plan. We went to ZBA. ZBA denied our, uh, our petition, Attorney Nazarell's petition. I, I think primarily, and Mr. Sweeney can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but I think primarily the, the fire department had issues. Uh, with the layout of the two new homes that would be part of Skyview Village. Uh, in, in essentially the fact that they're on a shared driveway and the driveway was only twelve feet wide. They had concerns, uh, over access to those two lots. Uh, so as part of this new plan that we have before you, as part of this petition, we've given each of those. Two lots that would hopefully become part of Skyview, their own frontage, uh, on the Skyview roadway. In their own individual driveways, uh, wider than the twelve feet we had previously. So we, we feel like we've addressed, uh, the major concern that the ZBA had, uh, for their denial, Madam Chair.
Uh, um, gonna start with Chief Williams. In regards to the public safety, um.
I, I was actually just looking for the plan online, madam. Can you skip me and go to the, uh, next person?
Sure. Other board members?
No, I think, uh, it's an accurate depiction from what Mr. Ferry are saying. Um, that type of property is very unique. It, it, um, so I, I think that was, uh, the determination that the, uh, zoning board had with it.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. If not, we can open up to public, um, while we give, uh, Chief Williams some time.
Um, Councilor Nick Castro. Good evening. You should be, um, your microphone should be open now.
Presenting Word Four. This property is located in Word Four on Copeland Street. I'm very familiar with it. Um, I'm very familiar with the over fifty-five located behind it. It's a very. Most part, it's a very happy community. People who live back there really like it and, um. Really value being able to remain in Brockton. They always have a waiting list. Um, I think the changes that have been made from the plans that I reviewed. Represent a substantial change that will satisfy the statute. And I want to speak in favor of this. I, I support this, um, and I hope that you will too. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other hands up? Okay, um, Chief Williams, anything?
Yes, I, I wasn't the one that objected. It was the chief, so I'm not sure what he was doing. I'm just getting to the plans now. The computer's running a little bit slow. Um.
Okay.
What a slow is me right now. Um, but it's, uh, you know, it's going back to the zoning board till the chief lovers bite at, at that, at that point. So I, I wouldn't stop it from leaving here and going back to the zoning board.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, roll call, Yolando?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate your time.
Okay, I'm sure you're not going anywhere. Scott, uh, definitive subdivision, zero four Chief Street. JK Holmgren Engineering.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Board members, uh, as you recall, in. I, I think I would have to ask Isaiah if he can just give me a hand and call up the plan. To be honest, I was expecting to. Be able to get to my office and I didn't think I was going to have time, not thinking that. Rob would be as long-winded as he was with his six o'clock presentation. So I had plenty of time to cross the state and get back to Brockton, but, uh. Because I didn't, I'm going to ask Isaiah, possibly help me and just call up the plan.
I think he can do that for you.
Thank you.
You asked so nicely. Made, made fun of Rob.
You made fun of Rob. That's a double bonus, yes. So, uh, so anyways, you, you folks remember at our last meeting, I, I think sheet four, Isaiah, or if you may. Uh, at our last meeting, uh, whoop, um, yep, there you go. Uh, we spoke about the plan. It, it's labeled the definitive subdivision plan, but it's essentially a roadway improvement plan. The, the roadway itself already exists. Uh, it was part of a previously approved hundred-year-old subdivision plan. The lot itself already exists and is fact, a grandfathered lot. So we just need the board's permission to construct the roadway. Uh, as you recall, we, we spoke in detail about, uh, the changes that we had made that were requested by the planning department. The, uh, looping the water main all the way through, uh, all the way through the roadway, uh, placing a hydrant at the front of the property. Also, uh, providing drainage that would not affect, uh, the abutting, uh, property owners that have some extensive landscaping. So we pulled our drainage back and, and provided drainage basically right in front of our lot. Uh, there were still some concerns about all of the drainage that runs from Field Street, uh, down the page as you look at it. And, uh, what we could do to, to help that situation. So on this plan, we, we kind of, uh. We kind of, I guess, showed it a little bit more clearly. We have a, a roof infiltration system that ensures all the runoff from the roof. We're going into an infiltration system and we also have a proposed swale. That's going to go from the back of the house and all the way, uh, along the lower side of the house as you folks are looking at the plan. And it'll direct all of the runoff into the drainage system, uh, within the roadway. So it, it ensures that all the, uh, overland runoff that's going from Field Street now. And getting to those, uh, abutting properties, we're going to intercept it, get it into our drainage system. And, uh, essentially by doing this, we're going to make the, uh, the abutting property owner's situation a lot better post-construction than it is currently. So that's the, the change that we made as a result of our conversations with you folks at the last meeting.
I have two. Staff reports here. Um, other board members?
Uh, Madam Chair, if I, if I could, um, yeah, the change is great, uh, Scott. My concern was the neighbor, um, as you look at the map to the. Lower part because the topography appears it flows that way.
Correct.
Uh, so just in a little bit more detail. Uh, you are curving the water to get to these areas. Can you, can you just say what the grading will be? Or how high?
Sure. So it's a, uh, as I said, it's a drainage swale, so a, a little bit of a depression just to. Channelize the water from behind our house, uh, and then down, i- if you look at our, if you were standing in the roadway, our right-hand lot line. Uh, we kind of have a, a little bit of, of flow arrows, I guess you'd call it. And it, it shows, the swale shows that the water will be directed. Out into the roadway, into the, uh, the catch basins in the roadway and into the four leaching pits that are in the roadway. So it really, uh, because of that little depression, that'll be right on the, on the lot line on our property. It just makes sure that all of that overland flow will get, uh, caught in that depression and sent out to the, uh, to the roadway. So it just ensures that it won't go to number thirty-six North Ave like it currently does.
Okay, and that will, and that's part of the plan and that will be a condition for an occupancy permit to make sure that this is all in order?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, James. Uh, other board members? Okay, no other questions? Open it to public.
Ladies and gentlemen, those of you who wish to address the board may use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you are joining us by telephone and wish to speak, you can use the star nine feature. And that should, uh, notify us that, uh, you would like to speak. And we do have one, uh, person at the moment, and that is Ms. McLean. And your microphone should be open now.
Hi, um, thank you, um, Madam Chair and board members for having me and giving me this opportunity. Um, my name is Gia McLean. I reside at, um, thirty-six North, uh, um. Just bear with me for a moment. I'm kind of nervous with this one. Um. So as it stands, um, my house is at the base of the slope of the property. So, um. I believe rightly so. My concern would be the water and sewage drainage. Um, looking at, um, the plans that you had on your website, it states that. Um, and this is, um, in the grading and drainage notes on page three, um, lines ten and, um. And eleven, inspection and maintenance of basin shall be performed four times within the first year of operation. Thence, inspections and maintenance shall be conducted on semi-annual basis two times a year and there. And after all large stones. Um, accumulated debris in catch basins, trench graves and basins shall be removed before it exceeds two feet in depth and disposed of property. Broken or gas-trapped foots shall be immediately repaired or replaced to ensure adequate functions. Um. Then it goes on to say on page one, number twenty-one, the maintenance of the drainage is the owner's responsibility post-construction. Um, both, um, of all the quotes that I just, uh, mentioned, um, it's concerning because. If any part of the drainage system breaks. I am in danger of sewage contamination, um, because I'm at the base of the slope. Um, and then I become at the mercy of the prospective homeowners in terms of when they will get whatever drainage is fixed. Or sewer lines or anything of that nature. Um, as it stands now, there is a natural runoff, um, and it's below, um, ground level. Um, and it's so far no com- I haven't had any problems. It's a very wooded area. Um, I'm, I, I'm concerned because. What about land erosions and all of those things and the ripple effects of, um, disturbing all of that land with the, um, paved easement? Um. I, I'm just really concerned because I'm thinking about. Just my safety of my family and, um. And just me being here as a citizen, um, of Brockton, I'm living in Brockton, um. He, the house and everything is right in top of my backyard. Um, on the map, it doesn't look like it's close, but it's really close. And, um. I just, I'm asking that we do not go with this, um, proposed driveway. Um. I'm also concerned that I had asked before about the lighting, um, in the last meeting. Um, and if the gentleman said it will be the responsibility of the homeowners. So if there's no lighting and we have that, um, wooded section or that, that's in my backyard. Um, and it's a paved street, um, I'm just thinking of terms of homeless people, mental health people, addiction. My home has been broken in, um, twice and vandalized once since I've been here. Um, so that, that's my concern about, um, the drainage and the sewer and the water. Um. I'm trying to, I'm looking at my notes, so I'm sorry. But even with the lines that he has stated on his plans, um, in itself, it's, we, um, it's kind of alarming because. If it's, if the proposed drainage system is good, why do we need all of this, um, monitoring of it if it's good? Um, and if it will properly function. Um, thank you so much for listening to me. That's all I have to say at this time.
Any other hands?
Uh, hang on just a second, counselor. I have one other, um, attendee who would like to speak. Oh. No counselor, no board members, I do not have any other hands up at this time.
So I have a question, not sure Rob if you could answer this. I mean, I understand concerns with drainage, but is the possibility of sewage breakage or leakage, is that something that happens? Or is that like rare? Or maybe Scott can answer that.
Sure. I, I think we're just I hate to speak for the abut, but I think we're just confusing drainage with sewage. They're totally separate pipes and sewer pipes never ever fail. It just doesn't happen. Drainage certainly gets plugged up and clogged, but that's the reason why we have the inspections. And just to answer the, I guess the question is if it's installed properly, why do you need to do the inspections? That's all part of the stormwater management guidelines that both DEP and the city of Brockton has. So once we get through you folks tonight, we go for a building commit. As part of the building commit process, we have to get a stormwater permit as well. And part of that stormwater permit, we're required to do the inspections that are noted on the plan as part of that stormwater permit. So every new development has these inspections that need to be done according to that timeline. So it's, it's just to ensure that there is not a problem that will affect either the the homeowner or any of the abutting properties. So it's a safeguard that both the state and the city have instituted.
All right, other questions from the board?
Ms. McLean has a follow-up question, I believe.
Yes, thank you. In terms of having a sewer line, the possibility I've had, I have had that happen to me when I lived in Boston. And it's, it's terrible, the stench, the water, and it is possible. And after the post-construction, I get you're saying now while you're, you're here, you're getting all the documents and getting everything approved. My concern becomes when the homeowners and something goes. That I'm, I'm at risk. So I have had that happen to me. And also, I didn't bring this up, and I know we had mentioned, you had said twenty-four feet wide paved easement in terms of emergency vehicles, if, is that enough? I live on North Avenue. My husband, who's ill or sometimes has to have ambulance and the fire department comes, they're able to get around and maneuver. Will that have enough space on that easement to get to that house that's in back of me in my, sort of adjacent to my backyard? So that's all I have. Thank you.
So can I just ask you, Mrs. McLean, was that new construction or old pipe sewer pipes that that happened?
I can speak, oh, I'm sorry. Fairly, fairly old, fairly old, but again, it was costly and it's, it's a long process.
I got a whole visual in the sensory, so I, that's why I asked, so thank you. Chief Williams, do you have any input as far as the safety with vehicles turning around, emergency vehicles? Any issues that you see or is?
Ma'am, we, we don't envision having to turn around down there or being able to turn around down there. But in discussion before last month's meeting with Scott Farrier, the owner had agreed to put a sprinkler system into the building, a residential sprinkler system, which will save lives if there's a fire down there. I, with that incorporated, I don't see any problem with this plan.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? All right, okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, James?
Yes.
Yolando?
No.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time, folks. Isaiah, thank you, and happy holidays to everyone.
You too, Scott.
Night.
All right, so now we are on zero West Chestnut Street, definitive subdivision, Gallagher Engineering.
Madam Chair, there are going to be some issues that we need to address. And I believe Counselor Nick Castro had sent an email to all of you, and I want to we will be into the record, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to turn her microphone on. We will read that into the record as it's, as we move forward. I have suggested that the applicant request a continuance, that there were some legal issues that had to be settled or discussed. One was that that the applicant may or may not have contacted or may have not have filed the subdivision plans with the city clerk, which is a requirement under state law. And that the applicant may not have notified the abutters in the abutting town, including the West Bridgewater planning, planning department, planning board and the West Bridgewater Town Clerk. And the third issue was that the road itself is over seven hundred feet. And our bylaws say that the road shall not be exceed to seven hundred feet without the request of a waiver. And a waiver was not applied for, but if the applicant would like to request a continuance or if the applicant would like to discuss those, or those three items to determine whether or not we have sufficient materials to move forward on a plan or on a hearing, I would appreciate their response. And so that is Frank Gallagher, who I'm promoting to panelist. And it is Attorney Albany's who I am promoting to panelist. And they should be coming on now.
And has Mr. Gallagher also received the email or understands? Because it's a very long list and very involved, and I agree with you, Rob, that they should consider a continuance so all that can be addressed because it's a lot.
I did share with the two that what the major legal issues were. I didn't get into some of the other issues, but the three that I just brought up to you about the notification of filing the plan with the town clerk, the notification of West Bridgewater and the overall length of the road and no request for a waiver. And so if
I would like to address those. I would like to address those issues.
So Madam Chair may
Of course he can, if he's not going to take our advice to, to, you know, help us better, take, take a shot at it, but I just, it's your decision. He has the stage.
Well, I, I think I can shed some light on it that may be useful to the planning board. And then if we need to, to continue it to the next meeting, that would be something that you could determine. But I'd like to address, I'd like to address those issues, and I think I can clear them up fairly quickly.
Please do.
The, the issue with the notice to the the city clerk's office. They were, first of all, there's nothing in the bylaws in Brockton or in the state regulations that say a plan shall be submitted to the city clerk's office. It merely states that they should be notified that a plan was submitted to the planning board. And there's nothing, no language whatsoever that requires a plan be submitted to the planning, to the city clerk's office. Now, in, in terms of that notice, that notice was provided to the city clerk's office on October sixteenth at eleven twenty-three in the morning. And it was acknowledged by an assistant clerk there, Donna Pluff, that she had received it. I have all that, that documentation. So that issue of not notifying the clerk's office is inaccurate and without merit. To address the other two issues, not, there is nothing in the bylaws and there's nothing in the state laws that says that we are obligated to notify the planning board in an adjoining town. It merely says that you have to send a notice to any abutter in an adjoining municipality who's within three hundred feet. And I would suggest to you that there was no abutters in West Bridgewater within three hundred feet. The only property that abuts this project is owned by the applicant. And the other issue on the length of the roadway and the dead end issue, the plan will show you that to the center of that cul-de-sac is six hundred and eighty-seven feet. There is nothing in the bylaws, there's nothing in the state laws that say you measure, you measure to the back of the cul-de-sac. I mean, and if, if a waiver is required, I suggest that a waiver is not required. But if a waiver is required, that's a de minimis waiver. And I believe if necessary, we'll apply for that waiver. But those other two issues and this, I would suggest to you without merit and should not hold up the hearing on this. And, and in every other aspect, this plan is in full compliance with the rules and regulations. Do you have any questions?
Probably, I have, we have all of these concerns from the counselor, so I, other board members, do you want someone to go first?
I guess I, I guess if we're going to see it, we'd like to see exactly what the plan is described.
You can pull the plan up, Mr. Gallagher?
Yes. They should be able to pull it up, can't they?
There you have it. I'm sorry, just if you can just give me a minute, please. I submitted a package providing information to the board members. I hope you all receive them. There's a copy of the plan in that package.
Is this the plan you don't have electronically?
Well, we're trying to access it electronically. Okay, is that it? Yeah. It's sad.
While you're looking for that, would you please provide provide us with a copy of the, the notice to the clerk?
It was done, it was, it was done electron, it was done by email on that date and time, and it was confirmed by Donna Pluff, who works in that, in that office.
Okay, would you
You can confirm that with her, and they should have that record in their office. And there's nothing that requires that a plan and merely a notice that an application has been fired with the plant, filed with the planning board. So it's all in the bylaws and it's all in the state statute, it's pretty clear.
But if you Forward a copy of that email, we would appreciate it.
Oh, I hope I can retrieve it. I'm sure I probably could. But in any case, the, the city clerk's office can confirm that. And, and I have, on my phone, I have the confirmation on a text or an email that it's, that they have received it.
With this plan, can you point out where the
Can you turn it horizontally?
I'm sorry, what?
Can you turn the plan horizontally?
Oh.
Rotate it. And then show the section of the dead end street.
Okay.
And how many feet that is.
All right, I think this is, this is unfortunately the way it is stored down on on my, my land, but, but I can describe it to you pretty well.
Isaiah, do you have access to the plan and can you put that up on the screen? Horizontally?
Yes, hold on.
Thank you, Isaiah.
Evan, okay.
You guys can stop sharing your screen for a moment.
Madam Chair. Yes. Well, we, we were supposed to receive this packet, I never received it.
I, I provided a packet for every board member, it's very comprehensive, has all the documentation, has all the plans, shows the easements, shows a reciprocal easement where both properties have reciprocal access. It's really not even a dead end street. It has a right of way through West Bridgewater, and the West Bridgewater property has a right of way through Brockton. But if, in the meantime, if a turnaround is required, there's a fully compliant turnaround on that plan.
So there's no dead end here?
Well, there, there's a turnaround that should be temporary. But if it turns out to be permanent, there should be no reason why it should be permanent. But there's a turnaround on that plan and it, and it's to the center of it is six hundred and seventy, six hundred and eighty-seven feet.
Okay. And Evan, Rob, is that what you also validated six hundred and eighty-seven feet and not greater than seven hundred feet?
That is to the center of the
Of the cul-de-sac, of the turnaround.
Of the turnaround. And our ordinance, our rules and regulations, your rules and regulations state that the road shall not be more than seven hundred feet. The discussion here is where do we measure that from? Do we measure it from the radius or do we measure it from the back of the sidewalk? And the farthest possible point of, of right of way? That is
What if it was the furthest, what if it was the furthest, how many more feet would that be?
That's sixty-some feet?
Yes, about, I think about an additional fifty feet.
All right, that's
However, yeah, that is, that's, it is a little bit over sixty, sixty feet. But again, there's not a waiver, just wanted to put that out.
Nothing major there, okay. And is, is this where the concern is that the entrance to the subdivision is located in another town?
No, the entrance in the subdivision is located in Brockton. So on West Chestnut Street. There's, there's, there's an easement for this roadway to access through West Bridgewater and come out on Ash Street for, you know, for the purpose of emergency vehicles. And I'd like to note the back, the back end of Ash Street is a very narrow dead end street and emergency vehicles cannot access it. And with these reciprocal easements that you should have in that And with these reciprocal easements that you should have in that package that I provided, it shows that the people on Ash Street will have emergency vehicles that service the end of Ash Street can, can come back through this subdivision safely.
All right.
If I could just maybe help a little bit here with the board members. If you look at the left-hand side of this plan, you can see West Chestnut Street that runs up and down the page. Then you see our subdivision roadway that comes in and it goes to the cul-de-sac. And if you look at the far right side of this plan, you'll see the word easement and that, that line that's running up and down the page just to the left of where it says easement is the town line between Brockton and West Bridgewater. Just to try to get you oriented a little bit.
Thank you. So as far as lot two, what's the concern with this not being a valid lot? What make, what would make this? What makes this a valid lot or not a valid lot?
I don't think that's been an issue, but do you think it, it may be not a valid lot?
I think the question.
What is that sufficient frontage and square footage?
And it also has the zoning square on it.
What is the square footage of the lot? If the radius, if the turnaround remains permanent?
Well, the radius is an easement. So it doesn't, it doesn't subtract from the square footage of the lot. Though, um, turnarounds invariably are created by easements on abutting properties. And that's an easement and it's indicated as an easement for roadway purposes. So it doesn't subtract from the square footage or frontage of, of a lot too. And I would suggest that that most likely will be at some point an abandoned easement for turnaround, for the turnaround purposes because that roadway will go through and come out on, uh, Ash Street on the other end.
So why does the easement cross into the Bridgewater street?
It doesn't cross into a Bridgewater street. That's, there's no street in, in West Bridgewater. It's an easement over undeveloped property. So that's why the, there's require a turnaround at this point. And, and until such time as that roadway goes through West Bridgewater, it's, that turnaround will be there.
But you're saying there could be a roadway put there?
At some point, yeah, it could be a roadway put there.
And then what happens to the turnaround?
The turnaround will be abandoned. It'll be no longer needed or necessary.
Oh, because then it opens up.
Yeah.
But that's that east, that turnaround is still on Bridgewater's property?
No, it's all in Brockton. The West Bridgewater line is, is to the right of that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, yes. We're not, we're not voting on any, anything about a road going through, correct?
No, this is, we're voting on a definitive subdivision.
Right. I'd like to point out that this was approved once before with certain conditions that could not be met. And now those conditions have been met regarding the radiuses on West Chestnut Street. Other than that, it was, it was already approved by the planning board. So those easements, those radiuses on West Chestnut Street now exist in compliance with the bylaws.
Yeah, when was that, if you recall? Because this, this seems a little familiar to me, but we see so many. I, uh.
Yeah, well, it goes back several years. It's been a, a long history on this property.
When was, when did this come before the board last, do you know?
In two thousand and one, I think.
Okay.
And it was approved and I withdrew the application because we could not meet the conditions at the time. Since then, we've acquired easements for the, for roadway purposes that comply with the rules and regulations on intersecting roadways. So our position is it's a fully compliant plan.
All right. And then in regards to the, the drainage.
Drainage. Frank can speak to that.
Yeah, we have, if you look, we have a closed drainage system with catch basins at about station three hundred. Another set of catch basins right at the entrance to the cul-de-sac, which is about six plus twenty-five or so. Those all feed into a main trunk line. And that discharges at an existing head wall in a wetland area that's still, still in the, in the Brockton city limits. You can see it's being pointed out right here. So that, that, that's a system of catch basins and manholes. The last manhole is a storm scepter type manhole to, to cleanse the storm water before it's discharged.
So the drainage was supposed to be reviewed by a third party? Was that done?
Were we supposed to review it with a third party? I don't believe so. I don't know if you've done it.
Detailed questions and she's very knowledgeable. So I'm, I'm thinking that it's supposed to be included. Yes?
Madam Chair, the plan set is before the Conservation Commission at the moment, which has an independent review. And normally a subdivision doesn't come under Conservation Commission jurisdiction for the approval of the plan. However, this plan shows a direct discharge into a wetland, which then does trip storm water, or excuse me, conservation jurisdiction. So that process is going on and that is a valid issue that, that should be addressed.
So, so it would be contingent then?
Yeah.
And that, you know, you, you said two thousand and one, this came before the board.
Yeah.
And I have notes saying that the soil exam is from two thousand and eight. Is that, do you have anything more current?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm, did I, what did I say? Two thousand? Oh, no, no. Two thousand, two thousand twenty-one. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I wasn't around in two thousand. I knew, I knew this plan sounded familiar to me. I thought.
Yeah, you were on the board, you were on the board, Tony.
Yeah.
At the time. And, and it was approved.
Twenty twenty-one, you, okay.
I think, yeah.
All right. So there's something to consider for being contingent. Board members, other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. You know, looking at the plan, a couple of lots is, is possible. My concern is if it taps into West Bridgewater, then, then the whole game changes in terms of traffic on West Chestnut Street, which is already congested. So it's the future that kind of concerns me. So I don't know if you, if, if this is, you know, what your plan is or not. But would you be willing to do a restrictive deed covenants not to tie that street in?
No, I would not.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know, it, there's, first of all, there's, the, the property behind it would be landlocked and you can't create landlocked property. There's, there's deed at easements already over this property to have access. Landlocked property has a right to access to a public way. And it's either, it's provided in the deed at easement, but it's also provided by, it's a common law easement. It's, it's almost automatic that landlocked property has a right of way to, to a public roadway. And no, it wouldn't, I, I, I would not have.
Change between town lines though, or no?
The what?
Does that right of way change between jurisdictions?
No, right, right of ways don't, don't, um, they're not.
Do you have, do you have to?
Restrained by borders. I'm sorry, what?
Would you need to seek a right of way in West Bridgewater with West Bridgewater property?
Do I have to sink a right of way? No, I mean, if, if the property in, in West Bridgewater is developed, it would need approval from the planning board in West Bridgewater.
And would need to seek a right of way through West Bridgewater? No, or yes?
No, but no, the, the right of way through Brockton to a public roadway is already established. This roadway is also a right of way for the property in West Bridgewater. It's, it's a deed, and it, all of this is in the package that you apparently didn't receive.
I haven't.
Oh, you have it. Okay. So a, a lot of those questions can be answered through that. It shows, it shows the deeds of easement and it shows the recorded plans of easement. And those easements and those plans aren't restricted by municipal boundary lines.
I guess my major concern with this is the expansion that we don't know about.
And I as well, I as well don't know about it. There is, uh, there is nothing that's been approved on that side. That property is under agreement and that would be an issue that the new owner of that property would have to deal with.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There was a question, you know, there was a statement that the board had approved this in the past. I do want to state though, that the board approved the creation of a drive through a single piece of property. It was not a subdivision plan. It was a site plan review.
No, the subdivision plan was approved. That, that subdivision plan was approved and then with certain conditions. The conditions were that those radiuses on West Chestnut Street be amended to be thirty-foot radiuses and not twenty-foot radiuses. And then actually the call to, to rescind the application, to withdraw the application was made from me to you, Rob. And that, that was approved, but that was a subdivision approval. That not to be confused with the site plan review approval.
Yes, there, there were, there were two different approvals. The first one was site plan review and you're correct, you did get permission for a subdivision. I had forgotten about that.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, there's so many things that have happened with this property. It's easy to be confused. So, I mean, if it was approved before with conditions that couldn't be met, and now those conditions have been met. So, and, and in every other aspect, it meets all the rules and regulations of the planning board. State and, and, and local.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from other board members?
Yeah, Madam Chairwoman, I just, I just want to make sure that I express my opinion of being a little concerned about the, the increased traffic flow of the, the unknown of whether or not there will be more buildings built in, in West Bridgewater. So I just want to make sure that my concerns are expressed to the board.
Matthew, let me suggest something to you. A, a traffic study was done on, on West Chestnut Street. There was at one time a, a proposed thirty-one house lot subdivision in West Bridgewater. The effect of that thirty-one house lots on traffic on West, West Chestnut Street, it was simple arithmetic and it was done through the traffic study that was done by the city of Brockton, not me. And the increase in traffic was zero point zero five, or in other words, one half of a percent increase. So everybody has, you know, concerns about traffic, but they got to be put in the proper perspective. And that would be, those thirty-one house lots would only be one half of a percent increase in traffic on that street.
Thank you, Matt, Mr. Gallagher. Any other final questions before we open up to public? All right, public.
Hang on just a second. I'm taking some notes. Ladies and gentlemen of the public, if you have questions or comments that you would like to make, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen and we will unlock your microphones. We may want to keep that subdivision plan up or available quick to, for people to see quickly. But the first person is, is Kathy Wacky? What? I pronounced your name wrong. I apologize. Kathy, could you tell us what your last name is and, and, oh, there it is. Wacky.
Yes.
Your microphone is unmuted.
Yes, it is.
And you're free to address the board.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for taking time to listen to my comments. Earlier this evening around five o'clock, I did send this email, which I'm going to read from and ask the questions that I have regarding this property. So planning board members, you should have gotten it if you wanted to follow along. I will say that I am not in favor of this development for many reasons. I think, I'm not sure how many of you were involved with the Meadow Woods project, but I feel that this is the same project with a different name. And I would advise and hope that you, if you weren't involved with it, that you would be able to go back and look at some of the reasons why that project was not allowed to go through. Lots of reasons. I, I am very concerned about that cul-de-sac. Some of you have mentioned that. I am feeling that this is the beginning of a bigger project. If there was a way that we would agree that nothing would be developed and that cul-de-sac would never go beyond where it's going, it would be different, but I'm not seeing that. I also sent a Google Earth document to you last night or today, and both properties, the property in the Chestnut Wood homeowners association, which is where I reside, and I'm also a trustee for abuts the West Bridgewater line. And also the, his property does. So I don't know why, when you look at Google Earth, is his property, the, the development is all the way to the West Bridgewater line. If you look at it, why is he down that far? If he doesn't plan on continuing to move in that direction?
Of course we do.
He's also mentioning, he's also mentioning if it opens up, if it doesn't open up. That's very vague. So to me, that means that if there's an opportunity for him and anybody else to develop the land beyond that, the access is coming through Brockton. And that was one of the biggest issues that was part of the development and why it was not approved. I will not, I will say I am not, I do not have all the details of that property. I was not very involved in it. This is the first time that I've ever attended a meeting, but I thought it was a done deal. And I, I'm not feeling it's a done deal at all. This is the beginning. This is the entrance way to a bigger, a bigger property development. So I don't know if anybody wanted to comment on that. I do have a number of other questions that I'd like to ask.
No, go ahead. Continue. Just to make sure they're not, you know, redundant with the ones I asked. Are you reading off of your own list or what, what are you reading off of?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just reviewing my email because those were my points. Most of what I just said was nothing in my email.
Oh, your email. Okay.
Yeah. So you did, you did bring up my concern about the conservation and also the runoff that's going to be dumped directly into the wetlands, which is directly behind my house. Directly behind my house. It comes across the property that is owned by the HOA of open space and then my property abuts that. I am very concerned about the water table as well as contaminants that are going to end up in my property. I also, the second point in my letter, there was a letter dated nine thirty twenty-four. It states that the parcel has been cleared and some regrading has been done recently un, under a separate permit that was obtained some years ago. A covert head walls and wetland replication has been done recently under that same approval. I would like to know what was the permit? What was the separate permit? How long ago was that permit obtained? And how lo, how long is that permit? long is that permit from a while ago valid? Because I've heard of this permit that we got a long time ago has been used multiple times upon multiple times. So I'm just asking a question, does a permit have a limit? This seems to be the endless permit.
Uh, Mr. Gallagher, what what permit, um, what's the date of this permit she's referencing, please?
You're muted? Mr. Gallagher? Would you unmute? Thank you.
Yeah, I believe that she's referencing our order of conditions that we received uh for that prior site plan. And that permit is still valid. It's been extended and and it's still valid. So the work that's being done is it's being done under a valid permit.
The 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 permit was, the permit was granted just a month before COVID started, and then COVID delayed the whole process. So it's been done as expediently as we could possibly do it, and it's it and it is now completed.
And do you have a permit number on that?
It's the permit number is right on the uh at the entrance. I don't have it with me, but it's at the entrance to the street. We have to, you have to uh you have to uh post your permit and your permit number on the property. It's right at the entrance to the street.
And that's the original permit that I'm talking about and asking about?
There's only one permit.
So you got, I'm just trying to understand the process. You just need one permit to do all of these things that you've done over there for the last five years?
There were, it it's it's all included in the order of conditions.
Okay, um, maybe somebody can help me understand where I can get a copy of this permit because it it I just like to educate myself.
It's recorded at the registry of deeds.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the the other thing, uh, I am, and I'm just going to reiterate this, the stormwater, the conservation lands. I did hear that you are going to have that be reviewed by the conservation, and I would like and just urge the the council not to vote on this if you don't have um that presented to to the public as well, because that is something that is definitely something I'm concerned about. Um, the other thing, it's more of a technicality, but um on the quick claim deed, there's no mention of the current property owners uh being Chestnut Woods. And that was a, that that was in twenty twenty-two is when that quick deed was drawn up, and I don't understand why we're referencing old property owners and not current property owners. Is that something that can be um revised, submitted?
What are you saying? On on what document?
On your quick deed.
On my quitclaim deed?
Yeah.
Quitclaim deed for what? What property?
Uh, hang on one second. Uh, let me see if I have it right here. I think I have it um in a
You re- you reference the, i- if it's, if it's a subsequent deed, you reference the description on the prior deed to the deed going forward.
So when does Chestnut Woods Homeowners Association get listed as the current homeowner?
You are, you are listed with the city.
But it's not on this quitclaim deed?
It doesn't have to be. The uh the description on the quitclaim deed is to identify the property.
Okay, can somebody on the planning board help me out with this? Is this accurate information? I'm just new to this.
See ya.
Well, um, Rob, I don't, I mean, I'm not familiar with the deed having the quitclaim deed having a a butters listed.
Okay, so
Does the original deed have to list the butters?
No, it um, the description on a deed is merely to identify the property.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so it, I mean, her her concern concern is really uh of uh of no consequence whatsoever.
Not to dismiss your your concern, I I just, I want to make sure I answered you correctly.
I guess we can get this answered, um, because it is a valid concern. When I look at it, I don't understand where my piece of property is. It says easterly, southerly, westerly, and northerly.
Yeah.
It says formerly Alice Boudreaux's property, formerly Town of Bridgewater, formerly Frank DeSantis, and Chestnut. So all I'm trying to do is find out with this description, where does the Chestnut Woods Homeowners Association property line fall?
Well, tha- that's a matter of record. If you don't know how to how to read the description, you should um, you know, go to a a surveyor or whatever, or have a survey done of your property, but it's all been, you know, I I don't know if you realize this, but I I I developed Chestnut Woods in two thousand and two.
That that, okay, so you should probably, I ju- I'm just trying to get an answer. Do you know which of these properties formerly owned by another person is now owned by Chestnut Woods?
Yeah, it's a matter of record. It's at the registry of deeds. It's on every plan, it's on every plan and on every document.
Okay, I'm just looking at your quick deed, and I'm just trying to get some understanding here. If you could help me out by saying, did Alice Boudreaux own this before, or did the Town of Bridgewater, or Frank DeSantis?
Yeah. They all, they all those properties collectively were owned by all those people over the last hundred and twenty years.
Which person abut is now owned by Chestnut Woods? Do you know that?
I don't know what you're trying to say. I don't understand your question.
Um, Kathy, I'm sorry, I I don't see a butters listed on a deed. It's a description of the property.
Yeah.
Does your deed, maybe your deed has butters because you're in a, I'm not sure.
I'm not asking for a butters. I'm not asking for a butters.
You're you're you're
The butters.
Your property is described on a subdivision plan that's recorded at the registry of deeds. So if you want to know the exact meets and bounds of your property, get a copy of that plan that's recorded and it's available to the public.
Okay, I just, I I will do that. I just thought you could help me out with this, knowing where the bot- which side are we on as the homeowners association? Are we southerly, westerly, northerly, or southerly? I just thought it was
You're all of those.
Be kind enough to help me out with that.
I'll sit down and show it to you. If you want me to, I'll explain it to you.
And if you, if you look back at our plan that we've submitted, that was on the screen a few minutes ago, um, it shows you as an abutter. It lists Chestnut Woods. And so if you look back at that plan, you'll see where you're abutting us, if that's what your question is.
That's exactly, Frank. Thank you very much. Frank, I really appreciate the cooperation and thank you very much. That's exactly what I was looking for.
Yeah, so, yeah, you'll see.
You were referencing a deed? And so you're asking about the plan? So the plan would have you your pop- property listed and show where this property is and who abuts it, but not the deed that you are referencing?
That's okay, thank you. I just had got a copy of the quitclaim deed from some that had been following the Meadow Woods much larger project, which is my biggest concern. So I I can end it here. I can, um, if anybody wants to comment. But my biggest concern is this is the beginning of a continuation of the project that was not approved.
And so, um, Kathy, we have, I heard, we've heard you, I've heard you, and I I do have it noted here. Um, including a copy of what was notified to the clerk. Conservation has to review this and approve, and the drainage is to be re- reviewed by a third, reviewed by a third party. So it's, we heard you, and it's also noted. Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it, Tonya.
You're welcome.
Chair, the next person um would be Councilor Nick Castro, and I'm going to um her microphone. And Counselor, you should be alive.
So you don't want to see me?
Oh.
No, we don't want to.
Well, well, Meatball Man, you just hang on to it. It's my turn to talk.
Meatball Man?
Oh, God.
Okay.
All right, let's, we're down. Uh, Councilor Castro, thank you for the detailed notes. You were, you definitely um know what you're saying, what you're doing, if lots of experience for being on the board. Um, I did review a lot of your questions and current concerns, and so it did, were any of them not answered?
And your camera is
Some of them were. Um, I just wanted to say for Kathy Nowacki's, because I I suppose she's still hanging on. She was referring to the quitclaim deed from Meadow Wood to Patricia's Path Realty Trust, and that was included in the packet filed with the planning board. And it lists the meets and bounds description from a nineteen sixty-one plan when this, when the land was owned by someone named Alice Boudreaux. And it goes through the four sides, and I suspect Chestnut Woods is located on the easterly side. It's land now formerly of Alice Boudreaux and and Ellen McDonald. So I just want to say that for her. And um, I did write to you, and I know that you got it, and I hope you all read it. Um, and I did try to reach out to the planners about all of this, and this is what I wanted to say. Um, the length is measured. If you look at sheet two of the plans, okay? The length is measured on the center line from West Chestnut Street at zero plus zero zero to the end of Station Seven at plus four six nine nine. And so you have to take the link that's listed on uh in the application, six hundred and eighty-five square feet, and you have to add the sixty-foot radius distance to it, okay? And that brings you over seven hundred. And everyone's concerned, most especially people from Ward Four, because they thousands of people use West Chestnut Street to get out to Route twenty-four every morning, um, every day at all times of the day. And and so everybody's concern is, are they going to try to hook up the West Bridgewater land? What's been said so far to you? I can only conclude that they are. They're now, they've got this cute thing saying, oh, yeah, but it's an easement. It's a right of way. No, no. If that, y- you see that cul-de-sac, and in some of the plans, it's got a broken line. It should have a, it should have a firm black line, okay? To denote that that's the end, because you you you've met or exceeded the seven hundred square feet that are in your your rules and regulations, okay? There shouldn't be an extension passed there. There should not be. Um, call it whatever you want, a footpath, whatever. There should be no extension past that cul-de-sac and into this this property. Now, when I was on this planning board, you had to apply for a waiver when you filed your application. You couldn't later say, oops, I need a waiver. Can I have it? Too late. You didn't ask for it. You had to have that all thought out and do it. Okay, so I think they're too late for a waiver. But this is what I wanted to say to all of you, and it falls along the lines of what I said earlier about the proposed zoning change. You're hearing all kinds of documents being mentioned, and you're hearing prior, prior applications and this and that. This applicant can give you a chronology, or the planning department can give you a chronology. All you have to do is ask for it. You're hearing a traffic study mentioned. Uh, the comment tonight was, oh, the city did it. The city didn't do a traffic study. Um, Old Colony Planning did a traffic study. It goes back to something like two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and fifteen. It's old. We have a lot more people living here today, but you can ask for that. You can ask for a new traffic study. All these prior approvals, you can ask for those. Regrading, you 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 need to look at everything on this because it matters. It matters on every subdivision, a- and also it matters on this one because of the risk of of opening up the floodgates to lots of traffic coming onto West Chestnut Street. We don't need more traffic. Um, you've got, you'll see on these plans, you've got a sewer easement to the city. It's over a hundred years old. We know that the city couldn't prove that they owned it in feet, but it's still an easement. It's the main sewer main from the south side. Can it be crossed over? Can you, can you run a pathway or anything over it? You have the right to ask that question. That's an important question. The city has rights in that easement. We don't know how far down it is or whether it could sustain a path or or any kind of crossing over it. You can ask all these questions, and you should, because, you know, talk is cheap, and talk is really cheap in this case. Um, but you need all of this information to make an informed decision, and you deserve it. Let me see, was there anything else I wanted to say? I've got my Italian up. Um, I just hope you'd be thoughtful and careful on this, and given the questions that have been raised, you don't have to approve this tonight. You you know, most subdivisions, no matter how big or small they are, they go over several meetings because most planning boards, you know, there are, there is information missing that you have to get. And so I would suggest, I would urge you to get everything that you want, that you need. You didn't have something in your packet? Get it, because you deserve it to make an informed decision. And the other thing I wanted to say is, you know, at the end of the day, you're approving a plan. You're approving a plan, and so you want to make sure that you get the plan right. I'm seeing on sheet one, well, let me just say that the cutesy stuff about the easement and the stuff on on sheet two, it shouldn't be there. The road stops at the cul-de-sac if you say that's okay, because it does exceed seven hundred feet. Lastly, was West Bridgewater given notice? Well, I talked to people at West Bridgewater all the time, and they told me today they didn't get notice, and you'll see on sheet one, it's three hundred feet or less from the West Bridge, from the line, the back boundary of this property to the cul-de-sac. They should have, and this, and the land is owned by Patricia's Path Realty Trust. So they should have gotten notice, and that's a shall in your rules, okay? It's not a may, it's a shall. So it's up to you. You've got to go through it carefully and decide what you're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, question on the sewer easement?
Yeah. Hello?
Yeah, yeah, can you, can you address that concern?
The sewer easement?
Mm-hmm.
The sewer easement is, was created in eighteen ninety-two. It extends from Pearl Street to Plain Street. It's four and a half miles. The city made a claim of ownership of only uh a hundred and seventy feet of it for some outrageous reason. And uh the court found unanimously that that was a bogus claim. Uh, worrying about uh the um uh, the sewer line is almost uh twenty feet below the surface. It goes under all kinds of roadways, all kinds of properties along that four and a half miles. So that's a red herring. To address this, the uh statement about the uh traffic study, the traffic study was done by the Tabat Department of Transportation, and it was provided to Old Colony Pa- Planning Council. But it was also done by Ty and Bond, and it was ordered by the um, the city of Brockton um uh highway department. And uh it came with this, and it has the exact same doc uh data, and it in the um, the arithmetic is the same. Even a thirty-one house lot, a thirty-one lot subdivision in West Bridgewater that accessed West Chestnut Street increased the traffic by zero point zero five, or in other words, one half of a percent. And I'll suggest to you that the case law about traffic, and it goes to court, that it traff- to deny something on a traffic basis, the traffic increase has to be substantial, overwhelming, like more than a fifty percent increase. That's not even close here in this, you know, you know, uh the uh uh Susan DeCastro makes a lot of statements that are inaccurate, and it and they're inaccurate on purpose. She has a uh animosity towards me, and I don't know why, and I don't care. But that has nothing to do with this plan. And um, everything's done by the book. It's done in conformance with uh the um Conservation Commission rules and regulations, the state regulations. It it's in, it's in full compliance. There isn't anything that you can ask us that we can't answer, and there isn't anything that our answers won't prove to be true and accurate.
Well, I appreciate you saying that. Um, the conservation still has to review this, though. Um, well, I'm, I'm wondering why, because I've asked the staff before not to put anything on the agenda unless it's gone through all of reviews and it's been approved, that we don't have to do all these contingencies and
Well, it it was, it it was approved under uh an order of conditions. We've met that order of conditions. We've met that order of conditions because of intervening COVID. The time had run out, but the, the argument is, and it, and it prevails that the COVID stops the clock running on these time limits. And so does, when, when you have things in court, if there's litigation, it stops the running on the time limits. And that work has been done in strict compliance with the order of, of conditions and will be fully approved by the Conservation Commission.
It will be or has, I thought it's starting to review, Rob. I thought I heard you say it's still to be reviewed.
For final approval. Just like the planning board, you can approve the plan, but you won't release it until it's constructed and, and done in compliance with the plan. It's the same way with the Conservation Commission.
I just wish these wouldn't, these applicants wouldn't get, and this is not you, Mr. Gallagher, the staff that I've asked this several times before, unless everything's approved, don't put it on the agenda. Because now here we are asking all the same questions and have to put contingencies. And what about the, the drainage to be reviewed by a third party? Where, where are we with that?
Well, you, you submit it to a third party and we pay for it.
Okay, so all this still has to be done. So this is not, it's not finished.
Well, that's, that's, you know, that's up to you.
Would you be open to continuing this request, a continuance? So that these questions or open items can be completed? In addition to, for some reason, the staff, the department, actually the staff, the department doesn't have the notice sent to the clerk who went to the abutters.
I'm sorry, what?
We, there's no, our department doesn't have the notice that went to the clerk to notify the abutters.
Went to the clerk to notify them.
You, you, you mentioned you sent an email and you're going to look for the email and hope that you have it. And Rob doesn't have it. So that means our department doesn't have it. So.
Well, I, I, I can suggest you that the, the city clerk's office has it.
Okay.
And I can, and I can show you the confirmation I received from the city clerk's office that they received it.
I mean, I agree with you on a new traffic study. They, that doesn't produce much information to stall a plan. But there are some other open items here. I, before I request.
Yeah, well, I, I have no problem with a continuance if, if that will help clear everything up.
Madam, madam chair, before we do that, I, I do know that Counselor Griffin from Ward three would like to speak. And then Counselor Nick Castro has some follow-up. Ask us Deputy Chief Williams.
Okay, so can Chief Williams go first, please?
Sure, thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chairman, to Frank. I see an eight inch water line going in, but I'm not seeing hydrants in there. Do you have hydrants located in there?
There are hydrants, yeah. We spaced them every 500 feet.
Okay, I, I just didn't see them on this plan. It gets a little busy down at the end of the cul-de-sac.
It is busy.
Okay, as long as you have them and maybe you can just do another quick plan with just that layer to make it a little bit easier.
Sure, sure.
Chief Williams?
Yes, sir.
I would like your opinion on this easement to connect that roadway to the end of Ash Street in terms of, would it be advantageous for emergency vehicles to use that?
I would have to get more information on what you, an easement is an inability to use the land. Are you putting in a full road or what is it that you're putting in?
Well, the easement is a 50 foot easement. And it goes, and it goes through West Bridgewater and connects to the back end of Ash Street. Now you know how awful Ash Street is down that end. You can't put two cars through, never mind an emergency vehicle.
So I understand you have the 50 foot easement, but are you, what are you laying down for the vehicles to travel on?
Oh, well, I mean, would have to be passable, would have to be. But I mean, there's, there's the opportunity to create something that can be traveled over and, and resolve that problem on the end of West Chestnut Street and also create another means of access and egress for this roadway.
So given the lack of information, I would say that it was, if it was built to the roadway standards and extended from this area down to Ash Street, that would be advantageous for Ash Street. And if it was built to roadway standards.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking.
Counselor Griffin?
Jump in. Yes, good evening, Madam Chairman, Board members, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Albanyes. I have to speak in opposition to this based on the feedback I've received from the neighbors with their concerns that were expressed here tonight. The unknown traffic impact that could happen if the West Bridgewater end was tied in. So with those type of concerns and the questions of uncertainty, I feel it's my duty to ask you to deny this petition. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gallagher, your, your mic is on, please beware. Right, Counselor, Mike Castro is going to speak again.
Thank, thank you. I think I've said enough, at least at this time. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I believe, Mr. Gallagher, you are, you are open to a continuance. Is that how you want me to proceed?
Yes, but I do have some, a point I, I'd like to make to, to the board, Madam Chairperson. So right now, this, we're not quite sure whether we're going to ask for a waiver on the length of a dead end or we're not. And I think it depends upon, I think it actually would require a finding from the planning board as to how they define the length of a road. Because I've been through the, the subdivision regulations and it doesn't say specifically how one would define the length of a road in this particular case. And by that, I mean, would you define it, the length of a road being to that point that's at the center of a cul-de-sac? Or would you define it as I think Ms. Nick Castro suggested, which is all the way to the far length of the curb? If I look at the regulations, I don't have anything specifically that differentiates that. So unless, unless you can point something out to me. Yeah.
If, if we were to do the research and we could, I just wanted to let you know that we have been relocated out of City Hall temporarily and our files are scattered all over heaven and earth. In order to pull those files all together, in addition to the ones that we have online, to research and see how those were done, it will take some time.
Yeah, I don't know if we, I don't know if we need to do that, quite honestly. Chapter 41 gives the planning board the latitude to waive any requirement. You, you could, you could waive that 700 foot requirement on your own accord. It doesn't require an, a request for a waiver from us. You can do that on your own. And chapter 41 is very clear on that. Any planning board can waive any of their requirements on their own accord. And you could, you have the latitude to do that.
I'm, I'm not so concerned with the, the length of that road because it might be just a little over 700 feet. It's not like we're going into 900 or 1,000. But I guess we have to define that, Rob. What, where, where are you measuring it from? The cul-de-sac or the far length of the curb? And.
That will be on your agenda in January.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd like to make a point if I could. The irony here is killing me. Susan DeCastro lives on a dead end street that's over 2,000 feet long. It terminates in West Bridgewater and doesn't even have a cul-de-sac. So there's a little bit of irony there.
Well, you could, thank you. You can put that on the agenda for next month, but I would just say to speed this, speed this question up as far as your waiver, your original question. I would request a waiver just because it might be a little bit over.
You are not moving for a continuance. We have three other people who would like to address the.
We're moving for a continuance. We've killed this, we've beat this, we, we have enough. You have, you, we need the, validate the copy to the clerk and the abutters. We need reservations determination. We need the drainage reviewed by the third party. I, I'm not interested in a new traffic study. Me personally, but maybe other, other folks might. But this is all stuff you need to bring back to the table with.
Are you saying that, are you saying that the notice issue was still relevant?
Yes.
Which notice, which notice requirement are we lacking?
The one Rob mentioned, right?
Which one?
Email, you said you sent an email and we don't have that email.
Yeah, it's, they were notified by email. If I can get the confirmation of that from the city clerk's office, would that be sufficient?
Yeah, so that's, you know, I'm giving you all these notes for the continuance. So yes, do that as well as we need to make sure that the abutters were notified. So you must have.
I gave, I gave all those, I, I supplied all those certified letter receipts. I, I supplied them all.
Okay, so the, the department has that then? Well, the department can validate that because that was a concern of the, the neighbors saying that they weren't notified. So we need to just validate that.
So the only, the only thing remaining is the question of the length of the roadway. And you have the latitude to accept it as it is, clearly on chapter 41.
And Madam Chair, we do have a request that the, the three attendees who have questions or statements to make their statement because they might not be available in January due to the holidays and.
I, I understand, but we've been beating this applicant and this plan to death. So please, if you're going to speak, don't, please don't be redundant. Be brief, be to the point. I appreciate that. We all would appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and I will be as brief as possible. I know this has gone late into the evening. My name is Martha Testa. I live at 430 West Chestnut Street, which is right next to Chestnut Woods. I know Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Albanyes and Mr. Messina when they built Chestnut Woods in 2002. I'm about four or five doors down from the property that we're talking about tonight. I do have a letter from one of my neighbors, Linda Lynch, who's unable to attend. She lives down my side street, Chestnut Drive. And I'm wondering how I can get that letter to the members of the planning board because it does show the history that I don't want to repeat tonight. But just to emphasize what others have said that this does seem to be a continuation of Meadow Woods under a different name. The neighbors have followed this construction very closely. We are not NIMBY types that oppose development. We know Brockton needs housing. As far as the neighbors are concerned, the property development that would include three homes in Brockton, no one has any opposition to. I am repeating that the concern is the possibility of moving into West Bridgewater. So is there a way to share that letter that does show the history? Because I believe there are some new members on the planning board since 2015, say, when this started.
They're all new, I believe. Rob, can you put your email address or Evan in the chat so she can send this letter in?
And also, when you were talking about the abutter notification, we have a list of the abutters. We do not have the green cards or the receipts of mailing. So I just wanted to make that known.
Those are required.
Yes, those are required.
You already have those, Rob. They've been submitted, every one of them. If you don't get them and I submit them, I don't know what I can do.
Evan, do you have?
It'd be helpful to submit this stuff digitally. We don't take paper anymore. So this stuff should be getting uploaded to your application on CitizenServe and sent to the planning email. Both of those things.
There's like 36 of them.
And you can scan them and send them in.
I, I want to say that I did receive, I did receive the green things, the green slips today, but I just couldn't scan them. But um, yeah, for the future, I would say, yeah, definitely electronic would definitely be better for us to keep track of this.
You can cross that off your list then, Mr. Gallagher. Thank you.
Diana? Diana, you can unmute your microphone. Or Diana, Diana, Diana. In the meantime, we're going to go to Pat Jacobson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Pat.
Okay, hi, I am, I'll be very brief. I understand how late it is and mostly what I was going to say has already been stated. And I certainly will defer to Susan DeCastro as well as Linda and Peter Lynch, who I hope you received a letter from them. They have followed, in our neighborhood group who has followed this for many years, this whole development for many years. They have a great deal of information and I, they had a very detailed letter they sent to you. And I think it's important for you folks to look at the history of this. And part of the history of this whole project was, was been sort of, I don't, it's sort of the lack of, of being upfront about what was going on. And you probably want to talk to the West Bridgewater Planning Board as well to see what their take is on this. So I, I just wanted to let you know, and I'm Pat Jacobson, I'm a trustee for Chestnut Woods. We have 27 over 55 homes there that are concerned about this. And we certainly would like to see the thin quash, but at, at the very least, we're happy that it's going to be, it's, it's going to be delayed. And I assume that it will, will start to, I'm very interested in making sure the Conservation Commission gets to weigh in on this again before it goes any further. There's a lot of water problems already in the area. And the other thing is, will there be another meeting and we'll get noticed? We'll get notified again as a public hearing? Is that how this will work?
Yes.
If there is a continuance, hang on, if there is a continuance, it's continued to a date certain. So it will be the January meeting.
Okay.
Seventh. The notice does not go out.
Okay, so, so just.
On the city's agenda, the planning board's agenda, which is posted at the city clerk's office and is also available on the city's webpage under calendars.
And will there be public comment at that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, is Diana available?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So I live at 572 West Chestnut Street. And I actually live just to the side of what is referred to as Ash Street, which is impassable by only one vehicle at a time. And the homes that are already down there, there's already a lot of issues with how people manage getting by each other. And it's normally pulling into and onto someone else's property. My concern would be that Mr. Albanyes has discussed coming through West Bridgewater to tie into the back of Ash Street Extension, which then again opens up their contact to West Bridgewater. When it's already an issue, the, the very, very narrow road that passes between me and my neighbor's home is a big issue. Trash vehicles have a lot of difficulty getting down there. I've seen firemen get out of their vehicles and have to jog down there. It's, it's not a very acceptable road for emergency vehicles. If you're trying to use it as exits for a property. So again, I believe, and I agree with Kathy and Nancy and Pat and Martha, who have all spoken tonight, that I believe it's coming under another name. And I believe the intentions are the same as in the past, which is to get access to the initial Brockton parcels and then open up into West Bridgewater eventually. And you know, Mr. Albanyes can say day and night that, you know, it's only gonna impact the traffic by point 05. that, you know, it's only gonna impact the traffic by point zero five percent or whatever. But there's a huge traffic issue on West Chestnut Street. I live on the street. It's become a bigger issue over the past few years. As Nancy said, there are more residents in the city of Brockton now, and I oppose anything that ties into West Bridgewater. And I am okay if they want to develop the Brockton parcels, but no further than that. I mean, Mr. Albanyes said tonight, he absolutely would not agree to ending the cul-de-sac where it is and no further, which just again shows intention to tie into West Bridgewater and make it a bigger development. And that's what I have to say. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. So, you know, you've heard the cries of these neighbors, these butters. I would also consider blocking it off at that cul-de-sac. But, sure. If you recall what you plan on doing, is there a motion for a continuance?
Motion to continue.
Second.
All right, roll call. Yolando?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty? Marty? You're on mute. Just take yourself on mute. Yes.
Thumbs up for yes, thumbs down for no.
All right, yes, and then Tony Gonzalez, yes. Um, okay, I, it's been a long evening. I hate to keep the board members on any longer, but um, you know, I just wanted to mention, um, I had to call Mr. May. We, I don't know if these board members are on here. We've had some changes, but we have a specific applicant who we asked them to do one thing instead of another, to help traffic, to avoid more traffic on Pleasant Street. Traffic's a big issue all over the city. It's a big issue in cities, period. It's, it's going to be our issue that we all have to live with, live in the city of Brockton. Um, but we have to make smart decisions about it. And um, this applicant did not do what we asked them to do. It was a contingency or they just agreed to it. Um, so I just ask all of you that we pay attention to these applicants that we're approving, and if there were special conditions or we ask for a change, something, you know, Jim, you're always talking about lights on the building and certain things like that. If it's not happening, you need to report it up. Um, because they need to start taking that seriously. We have this job for a reason.
I, I, Madam Chair, I believe we can vote to make it a standard practice um, for anything that we'd want to do like that.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, um, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, before you make that motion?
Yes.
Um, I just want to take this opportunity. This will be my last uh, monthly meeting of the planning board. I, I just want to thank you for your assistance and uh, for supporting fire safety in the city of Brockton during my tenure here.
Oh. Well, I wish you well into your new, new next chapter. I'm sure you're gonna enjoy retirement. I'm a little envious.
I'm so sorry, I forgot to, my uh, my timer clock stopped, so I thought you were gonna stay here forever.
Right, I I was.
I wish.
Kind of pleasure.
All right, take care.
Thank you so much. Yep, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Now you can go for the motion.
Motion adjourned. Second.
Yolando?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes, now I can go eat.
I am leaving this screen open for uh, people who want to go to the uh, web links that are in the chat session. I'll leave it open for five minutes. But I'm turning off my camera. Okay, this is last call for the links. I'm gonna be shutting off the uh, shutting down the meeting shortly. If you don't, didn't get a chance to um, uh, use those, uh, please send an email to planning@cobma.us, and we will send them to you, but it's at the very bottom of our webpage. So if you scan all the way down to the bottom, you will find them there. Thank you for all participating. Good night.